Counsel will come to order. Please all stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undrawn and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the servicemen and women who have served and continue to serve our country here and abroad.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, D'Angelo, Kennon, Lucy, Matheson, Murphy, Nesta, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to welcome public here in the chamber as well as to speak to tonight's agenda. Before us tonight is the adoption of our 2013 budget proposal and would like to start our business with the approval of minutes and under Counsel Matheson's motion to approve our minutes, all in favor? Opposed? Approved? Next order of business?
The Standing Committee on Finance, gentlemen's refer paper number 231, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that appropriation be made for the fiscal 2013 year for operating and water and sewer enterprise fund. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendments: Additions thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars to compliance salaries in the legislative budget; nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to compliance operating costs in the legislative budget; delete thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars from permits inspections and planning salaries; delete nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from permits inspection and planning operating costs; add forty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars to permits inspections and planning salaries; add seven thousand five hundred dollars to permits inspections and planning operating costs; delete forty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars from police administrative salaries; delete seventy-five hundred dollars from police animal control costs; add twenty-five thousand dollars to bike-to-the-sea maintenance; seven thousand dollars to permits inspection and planning equipment purchase; four thousand seventy-seven dollars to controller salary; twenty-five thousand dollars to trees and planting; twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars to teen operating costs; three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars to library longevity; delete twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars from permits inspection and planning salaries; and fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars from revenue reserve for no net change in the budget. Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? Opposed? Counsel Lucy for the report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for all those people watching out there, also, this would be for them also. The city budget is nothing like your personal checkbook, let me just start saying with that. It's a very complicated, very difficult, there's a lot of moving parts to it. It's a process that, once we get the budget from the mayor, it is a mayor's budget, we analyze it on the finance committee's level and we go over it and we did make some changes. Just if I could maybe just give a little history and I know many of you don't need it. Mayor Christensen, when he took over from office this past year after the November election, it was the, you know, taking over from Mayor Howard who served for sixteen years, quite a long time for a sitting mayor. Most cities and towns, you won't see a mayor lasting that long. So when Mayor Christensen put his budget together, his priorities were a little bit different than Mayor Howard, of course, and he said all along it was a priority-based budget and that is exactly what he presented to us. There's items in there that I don't think you would have seen the past few years and I think they're items that are definitely going to move the city forward. It was, not to say it was a little shaky, it's a shaky way of process and I think even the mayor admitted to that. It was his first budget. I think he, there was probably some things if he could do differently next year, I'm sure he will, just to make it easier. I know along the way, there was a lot of information that we probably got in the last couple of weeks, to the credit of a lot of counselors asking questions. I think once we got the questions, whether they're from, you know, Chuck Ranagan, who did a fantastic job, or, you know, the mayor, or Ellie Cushing in human resources, I think they, or the superintendent from the schools, I think they pretty much should have answered most of the questions that were being asked, hopefully. So tonight, you know, I'm asking, it was a five to one vote in the finance committee, I would ask for full support of the entire council on tonight's budget so the city can move forward for fiscal 2013. And again, I think what will happen is, I think, next year's budget presentation, I think it will look different, I think it will be delivered differently and I appreciate the support. Thank you.
I have some lights on for further discussion. I will start to my far left, I believe it's Counsel Kennon.
Thank you, Madam President, and I do thank the finance committee for the work that they did. However, some of us do have a different vision. It may be considered a tragic vision, but many of us consider the city budget should be just like we would run our own checkbooks. This was not an exercise in that, in fact, in my, this is my sixth budget, on every other budget that came forward in the previous five years, there were some cuts. There were no cuts to this budget, none. Some things were glaring, but particularly I want to focus on the fact that, late in the budget process, and it may be because we received it late, but there was a management report, a management letter from the auditors. And in that, there is some very interesting information and I'll take it up later tonight, but particularly on the fact that, to put in layman's terms, we have a freight train coming at us when we talk about unfunded pension and unfunded benefits liabilities. Two hundred million dollars in benefits and this report says that our population of employees is about fifty today, fifty years old, average, and the baby boom generation is going to be retiring and it implores us to begin a trust fund and setting money aside to take care of this. It also tells us that our reserves from a city, although much improved over the last couple of years, at about five million dollars if I'm not mistaken, are significantly under the state average. Not only are they under the state average, they are significantly, they recommend that they be somewhere around ten percent for the best, but we're about, probably somewhere around sixty percent of the state average and they implore us to start putting money aside each and every year for that. Unfortunately, once again, although the letter that's on here was written in November, we just received this report last week. Had we received it in January, perhaps the council would have taken a different path earlier in the year. But right now, I don't think that we, and we did know some of this before, can ignore these and we've really set nothing aside this year, but we need to start some year. We can't be like the federal government and just keeping the, kicking the can down the street. So, in this budget, there are a number of things that concern me, but I would like to make a motion now, based upon this, on a number of things for new spending that I think we ought to take out of the budget and set aside. The first is Water and Utilities Department, there's a director salary for ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, that's brand new. I would make a motion that that be removed. Madam Clerk, do I, should I go one at a time?
Yes, please.
The second motion I make is that the Recreation Department, lease, coordinator, excuse me, be removed, twelve thousand dollars, from sixty thousand, three ninety-six, to forty-eight thousand. Although I have challenges with creating a new position and combining it, I have done quite a bit of research that I did share with you, Madam President, and in fact, Sister City right up the street hired a well-qualified professional that had been in this, that had a bachelor's degree in physical, had a master's degree in sports management and had some significant experience, and hired that person for forty-eight thousand. I also found on the Monster Board a similar job description and that was in the budget for forty-eight thousand. We are starting this new and for some reason, we have determined that the salary should be sixty thousand. So, I would immediately motion that we lower that to forty-eight thousand. Particularly, another concerning thing to me has been, early on in the process, I requested that, through Madam President initially, that we get job descriptions on every new position that was in the budget. I would say that that was passed along and that I got a unacceptable answer for myself anyways in not getting job descriptions and I will describe it this way. Fool me once, right? Fool me twice, fool me three times and I'm the fool. But, we have been down a process in the not-too-distant past, where a mayor added a salary and we approved that without getting that description and some of us knew we should have asked for that ahead of time before approving a position, particularly at a high salary level, director-type position, and that came and bit us quite hard as a community. I think it's a simple thing to ask for, that if you want a new position in the budget, the city council, at least before they approve that position, ought to get what the job description is and what the qualifications are. And I know there's a number of other counselors who ask for this information. We have not gotten that information. We have gotten some information on people that the mayor might like to put in positions, that's well and fine, but usually before, at least in the business world, and I would hope we would professionalize the city, and I know that the city council, when it was going to hire a CFO, you know, decided we need to write a job description. Well, in fact, we never got that. So for that reason, there's a number of things in here that I can't vote on because of that. So I think, Karen, do I have to still go through my list? One at a time?
One at a time, please.
So I think I got a second there on that one.
Second.
Okay.
The next thing is the lease for the teen center, move into the high school space. I would suggest that we remove sixty thousand dollars from the budget so that we do not lease a teen center and enter into any type of lease agreement. I'm not against teens, I'm not against the teen center. We are suggesting to spend today a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, that's not what's in this budget, it's a factor, three-quarters of that, but I am suggesting that we go slow. We have a high school that has four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty thousand square feet, Counsel Lucy, you did the most recent study on this, but that high school, depending on which figure is accurate, is about two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy square feet per child. In the state of Massachusetts, they will not fund you for a high school over a hundred and eighty-one square foot today. The national median on high schools is a hundred and sixty-five square foot per child. So there is ample space at Malden High to cut off five thousand square feet if that is what you want, but also, excuse me, but also, it is a building, unlike the buildings that are being looked at, it is a building that has a gym in it, has a pool in it, and has many rooms if we're going to help children study after school, because I've heard that's one of the things. But, like any startup, you try to go slow and you try to build off of something else. This situation, and, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, we, and anybody can pipe in on this, but I read the study, again, very pro-child, was a person who was on the Malden Line Board of Directors for ten years while it was being built, had done many things in the community this way, and I'm not against doing something for the teens. However, the hundred and fifty thousand, there was a study, a survey done at the high school, and according to the report, that survey went out to everybody in the high school and we got forty-two responses. Of the forty-two responses, fifty-two percent said that they wanted sports as part of the thing. Then they've done some wonderful nights down at the teen center, at the Malden YMCA, where they got as many as two hundred kids for a night at the YMCA. They did a survey at one of those nights and got sixty-four respondents. In that, eighty-nine percent of the children said that they wanted for sports. So I would, I would ask you to consider the fact that this five thousand square feet that we are looking at could clearly be done at Malden High, but the demand, nobody is sure exists. So to enter into a lease when you cannot have that cost is critical. Another thought, another thought for you, is the fact that every child in the projects today in housing gets a free membership to the Malden YMCA. That has a teen center in it. The teen center is open four days a week and a child who is, a child who is a non-member, according to their brochure online, and people I've talked to, can sign up for a year to the teen center for fifty-five dollars. Now keep in mind that eighty-nine percent of the kids who went to the teen and did the survey down there said they wanted sports. If we gave out to the eighteen-hundred students a membership, fifty-five dollar voucher if they wanted to go to the Malden Y Teen Center, I made an agreement with the Y, because nobody's suggesting, even Counsel Lucy's saying, it'll probably be used by about seventy-five kids, and that may be seventy-five different kids on a daily basis, but fifty-five dollars for every high school kid with a voucher, and not all, we know, not all would turn that in, would amount to a maximum of about ninety thousand dollars. And we wouldn't be locked into a lease with anyone and we could get out, so that if it only showed up with fifty kids using it, we wouldn't be, if it only showed up with seventy-five children using it, we wouldn't be paying two thousand dollars per child to open a teen center. I just think, given this day and age, we've just come out of a recession, to lock ourselves into anything like this is really not the most responsible thing to do. Because if we lock ourselves into a lease, and it's sixty thousand today, seventy thousand in a few years, and the, actually, on the, on the document that went out, it said seventy thousand and it was ten dollars a square foot, but the listing sheet said it was eighteen dollars a square foot. So I'm not sure we got the right figures yet, because that's out to bid. So that's my reason for voting, not wanting to do the teen center as-is. I would much prefer to give every child out there in high school a voucher for a hundred dollars and let them use where they want to use it and make agreements with a vast array of offerings out there. It would be far less, not, again, not every child would use it, we know that, everybody who's ever done anything like this knows that. Every child in the, in the projects already has a voucher that they can use at the YMCA for free, through the Malden Housing Authority, through the agreement they made with the Y. So this would be a more conservative and yet provide people with choices. One thing I do know, and this isn't a knock on anyone, but government is less efficient by nature than your nonprofits out there. There's no, you know, and that's just the way it is. So that's my second motion. The third, okay, that's second in?
Second.
The next item is the School Department. The School Department budget has gone up by eleven point two percent. That is five point six million dollars. Now for those out there, is the TV on tonight? For those out there in the audience, just so you know, the School Department budget was fifty point five million dollars last year, in here it is fifty-six point one million. Now I've been having a difficulty getting a lot of information, particularly have gone through our wonderful city administrative assistant, Sheila Formano, asking three basic questions, three basic questions since June fourth. And those questions were, number one, the salaries that we had listed on the budget that was, the budget that was supplied, did not have a comparison from last year to this year. So, whenever we've done budgets in the past, we've always gotten books like this. And in those books, in every year, and I went back twenty-five years now, every year prior to this year, we, this council, got a book and could lay out in front of you that budget and go line by line and see where the differences were, so that you could have a frame of reference like we do in every budget business in, in America. We did not get that this year. So on June fourth, I made my first request from that, from the Controller for the city side, and he did, he did do some work on that, which for me was clarified a whole lot. I asked the same thing from the School Department. We got, we'll get you that. Then on June thirteenth, we had a meeting with the superintendent. Let me stop there. I also asked for the end-of-year reports, which were filed with the Department of Education at that time. The end-of-year reports actually determine how much you have to spend to make required net school spending with the state. The state kind of controls how much your budget will grow, to a certain extent, in that. There's a formula in that and I, you know, the formula that, that they had, had benefits, and I won't go into the pensions, I'll go into just the, just the benefits on the health insurance benefits which they get from the city. And they had benefits in there of seven million dollars. And so I said, geez, that number stayed the same for three years. The maintenance number actually went down in those three years. And at the meeting with the superintendent, I asked, could I, you know, once again, June thirteenth, can I get the end-of-year reports, because I know they've already been filed? You know, they've been filed with the Department of Education. Could we have those so we can see what's happened? And again, I know I've hounded Sheila Formano and she has gone back and forth with the School Department. Again, these are reports which are, have legally been filed with the Department of Education. I asked for them in the beginning of the month, I asked for them with the meeting with the superintendent. He said that evening, and I, you know, ask anybody to say this is not true, I will get you that. I'm still waiting. We had another, another email flurry asking for the same thing. And then last night, finally, and still don't have. So, here we are with that. I wanted a comparison with those. And then the, the third thing, and I'm sorry I'm being so lengthy, but I need to let you know, there's reasons why some of us are a little frustrated here. The School Department, the line-by-line comparison, and the, these three items that are all the same, and the year-end report, three items, line-by-line, year-end report, and the allocation on these three items. Now again, the School Department makes up sixty percent of our salaries, sixty percent today. Twenty years ago, they made up forty percent. Our benefits from the city are twenty million point-something. If you take sixty percent of that, that number's twelve million. If you took fifty percent, it would be ten million. In their formula, they're showing seven million for three years running. That's got nothing to do with pensions, because we talked about that last night, there's some confusion on that, but we still don't have the end-of-year reports, which would tell us a lot. So, for that reason, for that reason, I am asking that this point, I'll make this point Last night, the superintendent, we got, the first number we adopted last year for salaries was forty-one point seven million dollars. On a sheet that we were all sent, it said last week that they spent thirty-nine million dollars. Last night, we got another sheet that said they spent forty million, fifty-six thousand dollars. This is why I think it's imperative for all of us to get the actual detail, line by line, teacher by teacher, we don't need names, just redact those, but here's what the salaries were. Three different numbers in four different weeks. And tomorrow would probably be different, would be my guess, but I'd like to see it. If, if we got a number from them that says it's forty million, somebody did the calculation. I don't think they went through four hundred and something employees with a hand calculator. It's got to be in a spreadsheet somewhere. Share it, that's all I'm asking. And we don't have it, still. So, take that number, I'll take him at his word, and I, I want to make this clear, I think we have an excellent superintendent. I think he's come into a mess created by his predecessor, Sid Smith. I was not a Sid Smith fan, I make no bones about it. But we need that information before you can make, before you can set this city ahead with an eleven point two percent, five point six million increase in the budget, that is the highest in the history of this city. Not only the dollar amount, but the dollar amount is almost two million dollars more than any increase ever given to the School Department. Two million, not a small amount. Eleven point two percent, and again, I went back twenty-five years, I'll bet I could go back a hundred. We have never had an eleven point two percent, and in fact, we only had one other year in that twenty-five years that was a double-digit increase to the School Department, that was in fiscal nineteen ninety-six, and it was ten percent. Last year, we gave an eight percent increase. So it's not like we're being unkind to the school system. I think, you know, for my own kids, my own kids benefit. They are not in the Malden Public School system, I make no bones about that, but every dollar that Malden Public Schools gets, if we wrote to raise, Malden Public Schools eleven point two percent, the Mystic Valley Charter School, which is a school which this, this city pays for, gets an eleven point two percent raise. So from outside, as a parent, I can say yea. Inside, I say, it's taken away from everybody else. Twenty years ago, they made up, for every dollar spent in the city, thirty-five point five cents. Today, fifty-seven point five cents. Every dollar spent goes to the school. That information was shared last night, it was put in a package. At what point does that eat up the whole budget? Only one other, one other group, and that is the police and fire, kept pace with inflation. The School Department, over the twenty years, that we had a two point six five per cent. The school department, over the 20 years, that we had a 2.65% CPI increase, did 5.2% per year on average, doubling the rate of inflation, doubling the growth of all but one department, the police department, which was about 3%. And that only came because in the last year, they got the add-on of the Quinn bill, which we all see in there. So again, uh, that is the reason that, uh, I am suggesting here, that we, the school department has in their line what they call school department reserve account. And I can't remember this city council letting the school department keep reserves on the other side. They also have a line in this that says, "School department additional salaries." I didn't bring that up, just bringing up the reserve, a little bit, to say, hey, we are watching you. And that reserve account, and again, I can't remember in the last five years, that we let an account be in the school department or any department that said, "Reserve department", unless it was on the city side. So I would ask that we subtract 150,000 out of a 56.1 million dollar school budget. It is a tiny amount, and it is not something being spent on anything, it is only a reserve account. But I would caution, once again, that we need to get in front of the ball on the freight train coming at us on benefits, $200 million unfunded liability and pensions. Because if you look at the graphs in this management report, it's not 20 years down the line, it's not 30 years down the line, they're talking 2015, 16, 17, 18, it's right around the corner. We gotta do something, or it's, there's nothing any of us are gonna be able to do. So we gotta slow down our spending. Next motion. School department, half of business manager. They have, uh, we have today in the school department, uh, and stop me if I'm wrong, Madam President, I think it's Sullivan and Rogers in there, uh, they're in the budget for $120,000, uh, as our business manager. They have been acting as our business manager for quite some time. Uh, they are still in the budget for that. And, uh, we also have a school business manager who is not on board yet for $125,000. I would suggest to you that we need to keep Sullivan and Rogers, we need to hire a school business manager, but Sullivan and Rogers ought to be gone a half a year after, uh, this, six months after the business manager arrives, if not sooner, they should have trained him and moved him on out of here. Because we shouldn't keep funding too. We either get the right business manager, 100, and $125,000, that's up from 102,000 that we paid in the last budget for a business manager. $125,000 is generous. So all I'm saying is, if we get somebody qualified for $125,000, six months later, Sullivan and Rogers ought to be out of here. So we ought to only be budgeting half of one of their salaries. So I ask that we remove 62,500 for that. Thank you. On that issue, I'm not done. Set, I got a second? Karen? The net, the next item, uh, is the, uh, school department operating cost budget. The operating cost in the school department, uh, last year, uh, this committee budgeted eight point, uh, I got it here, 8.1 million, somewhere in that range. Uh, this year, it's budgeted for 12.8 million. Uh, we had a lot of, this is what's going, again, moving, uh, this item here, this item here. I could go through the three different numbers we've gotten. Last night, we got a different number than three times before. Again, asked for some, we've gotten some description. The superintendent's left holding the ball, uh, but I would ask, because that's a 41% increase to the operating side, no salaries, this is the operating side, a 41% increase. I would ask that we remove 500,000 from that and put it on the city side. Much like other departments in the past, if they need it, they can come back. Now, there was, there is some claim that they spent more last year on the operating side than was budgeted. But that means they spent less on the salary side, because they never came back here to ask for additional money, to their credit. But that means they shuffled money around. So the money was good last year, there's no need to be raising anybody 41% until we get a clear picture. I gotta tell you, no matter where you were in the business world, or probably most of the government, would anyone get a 41% increase without somebody saying, "Hold on, I don't care how you did things last year, you need to do them different this year, find out a way, be creative, get it done." And that's all I'm asking. Take it on this side, we did this a couple years ago, we took money out of there, we put it on the side, and then we put it back later. I would suggest, like other departments, we make them think to operate efficiently and effectively for the citizens. Do I have a second? And lastly, and this is not gonna be popular, I'm sure, but the mayor's office has grown exponentially as well. Uh, I don't have the figures here, but it's one of the largest growth areas, and I know Councilor Murphy has questioned this in the past, I probably should've gone with, along with her in January, but now it's gone even bigger. I am troubled, uh, you know, I, I, I know that the mayor, uh, is well-intentioned, always has been, big supporter. I don't deny that, we have disagreements, we have a different vision. Again, mine is a tragic vision, uh, at least for the city in terms of keeping costs in line with, uh, costs in line with, uh, with, uh, the revenue growth over the years. Uh, and I think that's ultimately gonna win out with everybody. Uh, but I would ask that the mayor lead, uh, with leadership here, uh, when everybody else in City Hall is being expected to be essentially level funded. Again, there's only two, two areas, uh, getting increases, uh, everybody else is negative, the school department is 7.2%, the police and fire, and the fire, the fire only because they got that safer grant, it's gonna be a whole different story next year, are up. Everything else because of that is down from where it is last year. And to the mayor's credit, he has restructured the departments to make up for that. I don't know how much more restructuring you can do, but his, his budget to show, uh, leadership, for me, uh, and to the citizens, should always, uh, try to be in check. I don't think coming up with an additional 50,000 there is too much to ask. I know he went out, uh, uh, to the city with jobs for kids, uh, I think the letters already went out, we didn't even approve the budget. That's a little troubling to me, that that would happen, but, uh, offer jobs for kids. But again, we need to do things within our means, and looking with a long-term vision on how we're going to control costs when these other items that are unfunded are coming at us. So that's, uh, that is, uh, my last motion on that. I have one mo, uh, do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a motion.
Uh, the motion is to cut the mayor's budget by $50,000.
Salaries?
Uh, let the mayor decide.
Okay.
Just the line item. It is go, it is grown, uh, uh, by a very large amount, as we all know, well over 20% year over year. Uh, so then the, uh, the, do I have a second? I got a second. Uh, the last thing that I would ask, uh, actually, it isn't the last thing, there's two things. I would make a motion, uh, that the water and sewer enterprise, there is new spending in there of $525,000 line item. Uh, we have, uh, had the commissioners and other people come down to visit us throughout, uh, your good efforts. Uh, the original increase we wanted was 19% that the mayor had proposed, uh, that has come down to 8.6%, if I'm not mistaken. I know it's over 8%, uh, but I would suggest, uh, that 8.6% in a, uh, inflation of 1.7% when, with many people struggling out there, is too high. And that, uh, anything that is over, over the 5% threshold of our revenue growth, and most people are getting raises in their life, uh, somewhere in the 2% to 2.5% range today on average, and most people in Malden fall within that average. So for us to, uh, to gr, uh, grab more money on a percentage basis on anything, uh, is it, is something we should desperately, as their representatives, try to prevent. And so I would suggest that this new spending that has been put into water and enterprise of 525,000, uh, and I know the reason for it, uh, the sale point was that, oh, uh, we've restructured and we're gonna find where all these water leaks are. Well, I would say, draw that back over, lower what we're going to, uh, charge the people, and, uh, this will bring it down to about 5.8% if we remove that. Let the group that's out there prove, the brand-new group, prove that they're going to actually find leaks. Because if they can't find it with one crew, they're not gonna find it with two. So again, in a business-type model, let's see what you can do. If you start finding them, and we do the computations, and it makes sense to do two, then do two. Don't do two and find out, oh, that's not working, now we gotta lay people off. We should never go into something without a good plan. So that's a motion, to take that 525,000 in new spending out of the water and sewer I got a second? Karen, you got that? And the last thing. My last motion is a motion that there be $1 million of the allocation of indirect costs from the city side of the budget to the water and sewer enterprise. Uh, on the budget, you'll see there's 2.6 million something, uh, as an allocation to water and sewer enterprise. And I would suggest, to help the rate payers out, that we remove that allocation to the city side, uh, and use the money potentially that we just found, or find another way, but this will lower our rates, uh, to the tax, to the, uh, rate payers out there, uh, to be in the 4% to 5% range. Uh, but Councilor Murphy noticed this the other night, uh, this sheet has all the allocations that go along with the rates. Now, water and sewer, as a percentage of the budget, is about 13%. It's 24 million, uh, on a, for next year's budget, on a budget, uh, if you add it to the 152 million, uh, it's 176 million, it's about 13% of the budget. So when I went through this and saw the allocations, for instance, audit, uh, is 35,000, uh, that would say, and this may be, that their actual budget to audit is, uh, 257,000, that may be correct. Controller's budget, uh, this would say that the controller spends 15.7% of his time on water. I find that very difficult to believe. The treasurer's office, the treasurer's office, according to this allocation, spends 24% of its money allocated, so, they have a 772,000 budget, 185,000 supposedly is spent on the water and sewer. IT, 712,000 budget, 264,000 dollars is allocated from water and sewer, or 37% of the IT budget. Very difficult to believe that they spend 37% of their time on water and sewer. Government center, I'll come back to that one. Highway, highway, uh, supposedly spends, and we have a water department now, but highway has allocated 592,000, or 50% of their 1,176,000 budget. So again, uh, if we're having a water and sewer department, does highway really spend 50% of their budget on water and sewer? And lastly, uh, the government center commission. Government center is allocated 125,000. To the mayor's credit, I think he eliminated the government center commission. I don't know why the government center commission was ever allocated water charges. Maybe somebody can explain that to me. But clearly, we can't do that anymore, because there is no government center commission. So again, for the rate payers, I would ask that we, uh, lower that indirect transfer cost, and that's up in the revenue side, uh, and that's my motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, I'm all, uh, I'm all set for now.
Thank you, Councilor Cannon. Next light is Counselor Doc Angelo.
Well, Councilor Doc Angelo starts. Um, Councilor Cannon, the first motion you made was, uh, the 92,965 for the water? Director?
Director.
Right? And then the, the, one of the, towards the end of the motions, you had one that was 525 out of water?
That's correct. If you look at the, if you look at the budget, and the water and utilities, the top line has the director, that's 93,000, on the very bottom, with, with no budget last year, is 525,000.
So the 92 wasn't part of the 525?
No, it is not.
Okay, so I just clarify, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor, first, uh, Councilor Doc Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to everybody who took part in this budget process. Take a slightly different approach, I, although I did second most, most of those motions, I didn't second the one for the mayor's office budget, but mostly the other ones. And to really just take a step back and, and give the folks at home and everybody in the audience listening, uh, the prerogative in Finance Committee, I was on most of the votes, the, the minority, and I understand tonight the votes probably aren't here as well, uh, but again, just to give you the prerogative of how, how we're arriving at some of these decisions, the minority is arriving at some of these points to consider. And I'd ask everybody to agree to disagree here, without being disagreeable, we can, we can have a civil discussion here. And I think the mayor, the Chair of Finance, everybody else has, has made an honorable effort here, everybody's been very respectful. I found the process to be a, a good process, for the most part. There, there were some concerns, but for the most part, I think the numbers are the numbers. And I think that the mayor's priorities are, for the most part, good priorities, and that, for the most part, this budget is good, in the reorganization, in a lot of the other structuring of the departments, in the manner with which it's gone through. With that said, what I've done is, is take a look at Malden historically, and take a look in at what we've been spending. And if you look back, one of the things I look back from is the Department of Revenue, Division of Labor Statistics, excuse me, Division of Labor Statistics. And that shows that only once, in the past 10 years, has there been a significant year over near, year-over-year decrease in the budget. So, to put it simply, the budget really just keeps going up and up. Taxes keep going up and up, and the burden on the taxpayer really just keeps going up and up, whether it's on taxes, whether it's on fees, with the meals tax, with the bags, all, all of those things. So the burden keeps going up and up. Yet I reflect back to 2008, when so many people in Malden, and probably even on this committee, experienced the, the first part of the recession. And I know personally, I had to change my lifestyle, and certainly my finances contracted, my 401K contracted, my wealth contracted, and I think a lot of other people in Malden felt the same thing. Yet city government didn't contract, it kept expanding, and it, and it's continuing to expand. So again, with all the things I said, I think the mayor has a vision for the city, and I appreciate that, respect that. But, and I'm, I'm not gonna make the motion at this point, I did make it in Finance last night and it failed, and maybe I'll make it after we consider all Counselor Cannon's motions, because I think that's what I'm speaking to now. But I would ask everybody on the council to take a consideration of our growth, and particularly as it relates to the CPI. The CPI- The CPI, for anybody at home who's following it, is the Consumer Price Index, particularly the CPIW for Boston, which is a measure put out by the federal government, their Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it really measures the rate of inflation. And the rate of inflation, year-over-year, from this budget cycle, is approximately 3.1%. Well, if you look at that in comparison to the amount that this budget is growing, this budget is growing at more than double that rate of inflation. And another measure that you could look at would be the, the measure of growth. Last year, we experienced the city more growth than we have in years past. Typically, growth has ranged anywhere between 2.5, up to 3. I think the highest was 3.1, that I could find in recent times, until this last year, when it's about 5%. This budget exceeds that growth factor by almost double. So going back to something the previous counselor alluded to, is that management letter, and further, the report that was put together by the Department of Revenue last year as well. Both of those indicate that health insurance-wise, health insurance-wise for the pensioners that I believe the counselor was referring to, several other costs, some, some structural deficiencies, which I think the mayor is trying to address to his, to his credit. But it certainly paints a very dour picture of our outlook. And I think we should take heed to that outlook, and all of the financial people that put that together, and a lot of work that went into those, that we have this budget closer reflect, or reflect more closely, the rate of our growth, because next year, the outlook doesn't seem to be much better. If you look around, I think everybody who checks the news, we're looking at Europe, we're looking at the rest of the world, federal governments is really out of money, California's going into receivership, all these other states are having problems. And I don't think we're immune to that. All these public entities around the country, around the state, even us here locally, they're all having financial difficulties. And again, I don't think we're immune to that. So just because we had a year that was a little bit better, I don't think we should be spending the future for that. Again, I, I respect what the mayor has done here. I think all in all, there's a lot of really solid proposals within this budget. But I would ask everybody to take a step back and take the 40,000-foot view at this, and just look at the bottom-line number. And that bottom-line number is a very significant increase. And if we could take a percentage of that increase, which I offered this in Finance last night, and I'd be prepared to offer it again after we're done with the counselor's motion, I'd like to make a motion, to take some of that money and put it towards the stabilization fund, perhaps pay down some debt. Or maybe we could direct it to other places in the budget, or just give it back. You know, it, it's only a couple of years ago that 68% of the people said they didn't want to pay for trash bags. Maybe we could use some of it to offset that and give people a free bag, or develop another program. And I know the mayor, to his credit, again, is working on that. We had some discussion. But again, just, I want to try to relate it back to a data-driven argument, and relate it back to the, the rate of growth as it relates to inflation, as it relates to our own growth in revenues, and see if maybe we can consider some of the confinements that this economy is placing upon us. We, we certainly are not really reacting like that. I mean, if you look at the levy limit, we're spending right to the levy limit. So I guess I would ask, let's, let's reconsider that. And again, for the people at home, for the people in the audience, I'm not talking about cutting into historic matters of the budget. I'm talking about the, the growth only. I'm talking about that $6 million only that, that represents the, the new revenue. So that's, to me, what I think we should try to affect, and if we could take a portion of that for the taxpayers, to, to try to lower the budget, and, you know, the revenues have been good, I don't think we have an issue with that. I do think we have an issue with spending, and it's reflected in the management letter. It's reflected in the Department of Revenue report. So I think we, I think we need to address that. We need to address it sooner, rather than later, because it seems that later, we're going to be faced with more challenges down the road. So when it comes time to vote on the motion, I would call for the ayes and nays. Thank you, Madam.
Counselor Doc Angelo, do you want to make a motion to add to the list? Want to be more definitive for the clerk?
Yes, Madam Clerk. I would ask that when the Counselor Kinnon's motions are voted on, that they be voted on with a call of the ayes and the nays.
Okay, so you did not make an additional motion, only asking for roll calls on the previous motions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm hoping to raise an additional motion when these motions are dispensed with, and I have an additional time to do so. I would hope the Chair would indulge me. It will be short. It won't be as extensive of a list. It's actually two simple, two simple motions. I, I'd be happy to make them now, if you'd like. Would you like me to make them now? Okay. I would make a motion, I would look for a second, to constrain the amount of new spending, and I made this in ordinance last night, the, and I defer to the city controller, I believe it's 6.561089 number, which is the difference in new spending. I would make a motion to take 5% of that and give the mayor the opportunity to take those cuts anywhere across the budget he sees fit. That would be my first motion.
I'm sorry, it's to reduce new spending by 5%?
Yes.
With cuts made as the mayor see fit?
Yes.
Sees fit.
Could I, could I ask the counselor, what, what is the dollars of that?
The, I believe that to be...
5% of new spending?
5% of new spending. So I have the new spending as 6.561089. So it's roughly 378,000.
I will second.
The, the, I'll say. I'll say. The second motion I would make would be, again, relative to the CPI and relative to the amount of new growth spending. And that would be on the total budget number minus the water. So I would say that to be the FY '13 proposal to the city controller, the $139,375,616. I would make a motion that the mayor have his discretion to remove 0.1%, which would equate to $139,375 from, from the budget appropriation.
I'll make a second. I'll make a second.
And if I may, just, just finish on that, just one commentary, it won't take too long. On those two motions, again, just to give the folks at home and the people in the audience, really where I'm coming from is, if you read the management letter, if you read the DOR report, you know, unfortunately or unfortunately, depending upon how you look on it, this budget, you know, you're either voting up or down type of thing. So there are some really good things in this budget. I, I don't want anybody to think we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater here. But again, my main concern here is what's coming down the line, forces that are out of our control, worldwide, countrywide, the economy, and I really just think we need to try to constrain spending a little bit more back to, as it relates to, the CPI, which is the rate of inflation, and the rate of growth that we've been experiencing. So I would ask everybody to consider that. These are small cuts in the scope of a 150-something million-dollar budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Doc Angelo. Counselor Nestor.
Thank you. As the head of ordinance, right before this meeting, the ordinance took a 3 to 2 vote to ask for a written opinion from the city solicitor on all the impending ordinance changes that this budget would, would put into motion. So wondering maybe, Madam Clerk, if, can we even vote on this budget tonight while we're waiting for those opinions, or do I need to make a motion?
We have an opinion, a written opinion.
All right, so then I guess my next question would be, since we've adjourned the ordinance committee, doesn't that opinion have to go back to the committee, so they would have to call and have public notice of a new ordinance committee meeting?
I'll take this one. Counselor Nestor, according to our, our, our rules, the city solicitor shall, at the request of the ordinance committee, provide an opinion as to the form and legality prior to an ordinance being passed to be enrolled. I'm interpreting that, that her written opinion is being submitted to the city council tonight. So I'm interpreting it.
Right, but doesn't, shouldn't that go back to the...
You requested it, and we're receiving it.
Right, well, no one's seen it, and especially the committee hasn't seen it, so shouldn't that go back to the ordinance committee?
You requested it tonight, and it's here.
Okay, right, I understand that. And I'm asking you, should the committee see that? Shouldn't that go back into committee?
I don't think they have to go back in the committee. I think we can receive it as a body. And I'll distribute this. So I do believe we do have her written opinion on the ordinance.
Okay, we asked for a specific written, maybe you could read the, the motion on that, Madam Clerk? Specific motion on every, each item, not just one blanket statement? Do you have the motion from the ordinance committee?
So you elect an opinion that says Section 1 is approved as to form and legality, Section 2 is approved to form and legality?
I think that was the motion. That was approved by the committee.
Yes, it was. And I can read that, but I started to read it. I have my own notes.
Okay.
Person at a time, please. Where's the city solicitor? Could I ask the city solicitor to come up to the podium, please?
Again, I think this would have to go, it's not what we're requesting, and again, it has to go back into committee, so that the committee can review and make a report to the full council.
Counselor Nestor, I disagree with that. I think I'm, I'm reading from our, our rulebook to state that we are in receipt of it. City Solicitor is here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, city solicitor, I think the motion was that you address each specific item that causes an ordinance change, and this comes back as one sentence on, on the entire thing. So I don't think we, what we asked of you, we actually received.
Okay.
And if you could, if you could look at each item, and then especially, you know, define the rules and regulations and issues around each of the ordinance changes in depth, please.
Okay, and I, I think that I, and, and these are the ordinance changes that we've been working on in and out of committee. So I, I actually have been working with the city clerk regarding the language changes.
The ordinance committee hasn't seen, hasn't seen them. Or if they have, we haven't had the opportunity to debate them in review.
Okay, I'm not, I, I guess I'm not following, in terms of what's before you, I thought I was asked whether or not the, the language is appropriate as to form and legality, in terms of the home rule, as well as the ordinance changes. And so I think that provision and what you're seeking seeks to have me assert to you that it's approved as to form and legality. It's, and that's the, that's what I did actually provide for you.
Again, we, we asked specifically, I don't know, do we need to read, read the motions here?
Ordinance committee request an opinion as to form and legality regarding, and then Counselor Kinnon said Section 2.18, Section 3.1, 3.1A, but the opinion was as to form and legality.
And that's been provided, Counselor Nestor, written and signed.
Okay, so the ordinance committee doesn't have an opportunity to, to go back and discuss this? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's what it's saying. That's how I'm interpreting it.
You can certainly make a motion to defer ordinance committee.
All right, I'll make a motion to... No, I'll make, I'll make a motion to defer.
The ordinance isn't before you right now.
Right.
But when it is, you could certainly make that motion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions at the, at this current time, Counselor Nestor?
No, no, I'm a little disgusted with that, but thank you.
Counselor Spetafor? Your lights on.
For clarification.
Okay, Counselor Altrino.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. No questions for you, I'm sorry. Does anyone have questions? I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, now, is it...
Thank you, Madam President. Six months ago, when I came on the city council, I was placed on the Budget Committee. And over the last month or so, working with the other members of the Finance Committee, I feel I became a stronger city councillor. So I want to thank all 10 other councillors for their input. But I have to be honest, and when it came to the school budget, for the last eight years, I've been on the school committee in overseeing finance. And I believe Sid Smith, Joan Conley, before him, and now our new superintendent, has done an outstanding job. And we're now in recovery of federal funds that have disappeared, and that's the problem with stimulus, is they unfortunately disappear at some point. So I trust the school committee, who has oversight of their budget, and I trust that they, it is a moving forward budget in our school systems, both public, private, and charter, are doing a fantastic job. So I support that. When it came to the line item of every budget, every item in the budget, there are some things that we will all question out of a $155 million budget. I like the reorganization of the budget. Are there some things I would have liked to seen from my ward constituents? Absolutely. Are there some things I question? Absolutely. But I trust no one else more than the mayor that we have now to put forward a budget that I feel will hold him accountable, and his staff, our controller, our assessor, and our future treasurer. Will we have a lot of questions during the year? Absolutely, absolutely. But I support the budget in full. I don't support any amendments to the, any motions that have been made so far. This is a budget that helps people. I believe that's why we're elected. Everyone can have their opinion on who should be helped and how much they should be helped, but I believe we have the right pieces in place. And I will support it. I will question it during the year, and I believe the mayor has done what my constituents will help in make Ward 2 and all your wards move forward. I'm anxious about it, but who wouldn't be? Because this is a really innovative budget, an expensive budget, which I feel we have the funds for. And I know the mayor, as a finance person, as a former school committee member and councillor, is going to bring us to where we need to go. But I will always have questions, and the voters hold me accountable, and the voters hold the mayor accountable, as well as the council. So are there, are there great questions by the council? Absolutely. Tonight's the time to show the, tell the people in Malden that this budget is to help us move forward. It's innovative, it's organized to a way where people will, at the end, see the results of a great teen center, a great public school system, and hopefully improvements in our water and other things. Sidewalks are going to be fixed, trees are going to be planted, the school, public schools are going to continue to grow, as well as the charter, school, the teen center is going to be innovative, it's what the other cities are doing, our teens will be off the street. I'm the chairman of the board at the Malden YMCA. I'd love to have a voucher for every student. YMCA. I'd love to have a voucher for every student. I'll abstain in that vote, of course. But they'll just be another partner that the teen center needs, as well as the YWCA and other organizations. So I want to thank Counselor Lucy and all, actually, the councillors, especially the mayor and the controller, for putting a budget that is reachable, is innovative. And just to the mayor and the controller, I will continue to have questions during the year. But I believe this is going to make us move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Altrino. And at this time, I'd like to invite the mayor of Malden to come to the podium, per his request. All rise for the mayor, please.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. Just want to clarify a few points, if I could, Madam President.
Please do.
You know, first, with respect to the councillor-at-large, David Diarchangelo, I just want to clarify what I think, you know, I misunderstood when he spoke, is, first of all, there are no new taxes in the budget. And spending outside of the school department is only increasing, by my calculations, at 1%. So I want to clarify that at the outset. The overall budget is growing at 5%. Outside of the school department, it's at 1%. And, you know, I think the other thing I would just take issue with him on is that, you know, I'm not sure that we want to tie the future of our community to Athens, Greece, or Madrid, Spain. Although I am, you know, cognizant of the situation across the world, I'm trying to produce a document that will move this city forward, and I think this does it. Should we not be mindful of what goes on across the country and the world? Of course we should. And I think this budget does that, because the one thing that the councillor failed to mention in his remarks is that this budget does not use any of our reserves, which today is at $5.3 million. So I think to be able to present to you what we did on May 29th, without using any of our reserves, that only grows the budget by 1% outside of the school department, but yet accomplishes a lot of goals and objectives that will hopefully move our city forward and will allow us to compete with all these other cities and towns for which we now need the investment going forward. I think that's another comment that was left out by the councillor-at-large, is that if, you know, his viewpoint is correct, is that everything we do should be tied to Greece and Spain, then we have to come up with another way for our city, the city of Malden, to grow. And the way you do that is you do it with a combination of putting money aside, like we've done, and also make investments that will separate our city from other cities and towns. So I'd just like to address those points from the outset. To the councillor to my far right from Ward 6, first, I want to say, with respect to the cuts, there were no cuts in the proposed budget. And I guess it depends on how you define cuts, but, you know, we didn't backfill 14 positions. Three were shifted to water and sewer enterprise, and three were hard layoffs, for a total of 20 changes. Now, those were positions very easily, as a new mayor, six months in office, I could have proposed to fill and keep the status quo. But, you know, we made some moves on our end to, again, redefine where this city is going. So I want to make sure this council knows that, for the past five months, it wasn't just a matter of, let's add new initiatives and do nothing else. We carefully recalibrated, you know, these 20 positions that were within the budget heading into fiscal year 2013. His comment about unfunded pension costs is the first time I've ever heard this issue from the councillor from Ward 6. Doesn't mean I don't disagree with him, but to make this the mainstay of the future of the city of Malden, I find somewhat perplexing. Because Malden is not unlike any other city and town that's dealing with post-employment benefits. And if the councillor had called our office, which he has not, nor has he emailed, nor has he communicated in any manner whatsoever with our administration, with me, about what's gone on upstairs for the past five months in tabulating this budget, I would have told him that the next step after the budget is adopted is we are going to spend the summer working on post-employment benefits, and we plan on presenting to the full council in September an initiative to address this problem. The other issue about job descriptions and reorganization, the one thing that I've heard loud and clear from this council is that we need to reorganize. We need to retool. We need to think... rethink what it is our city does. And, you know, I'm looking back at this document on May 29th that was submitted. You know, we've collapsed government senate commission, public facilities. We've retooled the Department of Public Works. We've recalibrated Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. We've done a lot of big collaboration with Board of Health, Inspeccional Services, the Planning Department. I mean, so, you know, we've done a lot of recalibrating here. And with respect to the recreational coordinator, is true. You know, the proposal is the position would be at $60,000. But if you read the account summary, which we provided in the web-based application of the budget, the net cost of doing that is $6,000. Because that position is already being paid X amount. When you add in the benefits of what that person's making, and you add what we think the position should be, add it $6,000. To me, that is worth the risk to determine whether or not we can add recreational programs to the city of Malden. Other cities and towns do it. We want to put ourselves in a position to compete with those cities and towns. So that's why we made the proposal. Of course, the position will become more defined based on whether or not the council supports it. You know, we sent down a generic idea of what we think this position would accomplish. Did it have, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 through 15 points about what the job will do on a day-to-day basis? No. It's conceptual. It's an idea. It's a way of, you know, offering something that we don't do now. And it also addresses what I think the councillor's been talking about since he's been in public service, is taking a position that I don't believe we're getting the true value out of, and making it into something that I think we will. And that's why we proposed it. You know, right now, Mr. Levine, who we peg as being the recreational coordinator, is overseeing McDonald Stadium, and he's doing some custodial activity. Anybody that know Mr. Levine's history here in the city of Malden, he is one of the best when it comes to coordinating activities for kids and adults. And so, you know, we thought that it made sense to tap his full potential to get more out of him. And I think that's what this proposal does. With respect to the water utility director, again, we tried to backfill that position. And it should be noted, you know, that the person that was in the position before retired. We did advertise with a range of $68,000 to $72,000, $73,000. We didn't get any candidates we liked, because we screen our positions now, new positions. And so what I thought would, you know, make sense now is that Jeffrey Manship, who has the water license, which is a big requirement to oversee water and sewer, be placed in that position. We have six months to determine whether or not, you know, he is fulfilling our expectations. And I heard loud and clear from the Ward 5 councillor, and I agree with her, you know, in July, I will have all the directors in to start meeting, you know, 30, 60, 90, 120, you know, goals. We've talked about the evaluation tool that, you know, we're going to put in place. So I thought it, you know, short-term, it fits our need. And we do have to, I think, get after water and sewer, which the councillor from Ward 6 failed to mention, is that, you know, prior to our administration, water and sewer was simply a blip on the radar. You know, the hearings were held in mid-July, and this is no disrespect to any prior administrations. But that issue was always addressed when this council was in recess, and everybody else in the city was on full vacation mode. We're at least taking the step to, you know, make sure everybody knows that this issue exists. We have a problem here. We have a big problem, and we need to start addressing it. With respect to the teen center, you know, give us some credit. You know, do you think that our intent is to lock the city into a long-term lease without having any maneuverability? It's preposterous. All we've done now, again, what will separate Malden from the other cities and towns around is to get people to come into the city. And so I feel very confident that when the RFRs come back, the flexibility will be there in terms of what the lease will look like. But I think it's worth the risk, the chance. $150,000 under $152 million budget to be able to tell the outside world that we have a teen center, we have a place that our teens can go between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 p.m. is worth doing. So we can get caught up in this little nuance of, well, you know, is the lease going to be five years? Is it going to be three years? That's all fine and dandy. But to me, keep your eyes on the prize. Keep your eyes on the big picture. And that is what is going to lead this city into the future. Sports partnerships, you can... You can take any report and go into any section and do what you will, which this councillor, in my opinion, has done. Because if he was as involved as I have been, as that councillor-at-large up there has been, he would know that the teen center is a place for teens to be able to go and be safe. As part of that, of course, they're not going to be playing a full-length court of basketball in the teen center. But what we have proposed to do is that the teen center work in partnership with the Malden YMCA, the YWCA, the Partnership for Community Schools to provide sports activities, to provide homework help, to provide a whole range of activities that will all be working together in concert. So on a Thursday, you might have our police chief there talking about crime prevention. On Friday night, those teens might be at the YMCA playing the basketball that the councillor identified. But the one thing I can tell you, I have a lot of experience with these group of teens. I've been to the teen nights. I have not seen the councillor from Ward 6 at any of those teen nights. So I don't know how he can confidently state that we are on the wrong track here with this proposal. With respect to the school department, he claims that we have an excellent superintendent. You wouldn't know it by his comments. Because if you look at what he has come into and what he has done, you know, in his first year in office, you have to give a little flexibility. Same with me. I've been in six months, although it feels a lot longer. You know, you have to give us a little due here, a little bit of time to, you know, find the rhythm that Mayor Howard said on his way out. So, you know, I would just ask all of you, when you think about the school department tonight, who I know have done a superb job as chairperson of the school committee, don't forget, because it was not mentioned here tonight from the councillor to my far right, that they did cut. You know, this wasn't a... This wasn't a growth year for the school department. Sure, you could look at where they were this year and where they're going next year. But when you add up everything they needed, everything to keep them functioning from where they were in fiscal year 2012 to operating in fiscal year 2013, they cut 1.5, 1.6 million dollars. You know, I know the cuts. I've seen the cuts. I've heard from the people that are impacted by the cuts. They're not easy, but they did them. So they did contribute, you know, to the proposal that's in front of you. I want to make sure that's noted. Now, we can go into the budget again. The $150,000 reserve, I had the same questions as the councillor from Ward 6, but I thought the superintendent gave a pretty good explanation. You know, I mean, you have someone show up that, you know, needs a breathing tube. You know, that's big, big money. And to me, it made sense, based upon what he's experienced, to set aside $150,000 on a $56 million budget on a $152 million city budget. The mayor's office, $50,000, you know, what you will. But I can tell you right now, you are getting exceptional value in that office. If I had to stop tomorrow, I would say I could not be prouder of the staff that's working up there. And the reason I'm not here, just to say they're my staff, and they're doing a great job, leave us untouched. But I would say to the council, I think you're getting great value there. They're working 60, 70 hours a week. They're in here on the weekends. They're around the community at night. And so, you know, if we want to reduce it by 50,000, sure, on the margins, that's 50,000 you could put aside. But when you compute that against the value that I believe the city's getting from those positions, I would not recommend that. And I could, you know, I could go on and on and on. But, you know, I would just say to you all that I feel, just as I did on May 29th, that... And this is another thing I would just close by saying, don't lose sight, you know, of what was discussed back on May 29th. You know, we're increasing the veterans department by nearly 10%. The police department is going to have five officers plus one cadet as part of the budget. The fire department is going to be getting new reporting software. The Department of Public Works is going to be retooled. The teen center, the recreation department, the increase in summer jobs, the senior center. We're now going to have a senior work-off program, where seniors will be able to contribute to the city and have their property taxes reduced. Fellasmere Pond, $25,000 investment, which is on the entryway into the city, to hopefully make that as beautiful as we all want it to be. Public arts projects, you know, we're going to continue the good work, Madam President, of the switch boxes, and hopefully expand that into stairwells and crosswalks. Dyna and Malden campaign, that I know has been championed hard by the councillor from Ward 4, Jim Nester, were proposing $19,964, based on his leadership on this topic, to get people to come into the downtown and into the various restaurants and businesses that we have here in Malden. We propose setting aside a salary reserve to address our employees who may not be at the greater step that they should be. Sidewalk repairs, a nearly 50% increase. Anti-graffiti program, we're going to buy our own equipment. We're eliminating an issue for 10... That we have set aside $10,000 in the budget that was championed by the councillor from Ward 6, Neil Cannon, to eliminate fees for electronic fund transfers. I agree with him on this issue, and that's why we proposed it. So... And we're doing that, Madam President, again, you know, all with less than 1% in new spending outside of the school department. Again, when you add in the school department, it's 5%. But that's an investment worth making. So I just wanted to clarify those comments. Madam President, I appreciate your indulgence, and I would certainly be here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Christiansen. I would like to start. I'm going to start with people who haven't spoken first, and that will be to my left, Neil Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to remind us all that we just had an election in November with a new administration that came in with an overwhelming amount of support from the Malden residents, that promised to move our city forward. And we have all witnessed in the last six months the tireless effort our mayor has put out. We find him here, you know, 8:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. And as he's mentioned, his staff, the same thing. I believe that this, his first budget, is a budget that he has attempted to live up to the promises that he made in his campaign. And that we should not be looking to scale things back, but I think we should be looking to improve our city. And the budget speaks to that. I am confident, based on the committee's review, based on the mayor's explanation to us, that his effort in putting this budget together speaks to moving the city forward. And I, for one, intend to vote for his budget moving forward. I do not intend to support these amendments that were made here tonight that scale things back and delay things. I think we need to be giving the mayor a chance to play out his vision, the vision that he campaigned on, the vision that the voters of Malden endorsed and supported. And I guess that says it all. We need to step out on faith. I believe in what the mayor's attempting to do, and I'm here to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor, is, no? I don't know if it's you or if Neil.
Do you want me to go?
Yep.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, point of information while I start, uh, Counselor, uh, actually, I think Counselor Lucy from Finance, this is a management letter that we received, it was last week, is that correct? Had you received it before last week?
Absolutely.
Uh, could I call, uh, the controller up? Could I do that?
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Radigan, can you step up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Radigan. Uh, this is the management letter, I think you sent it over to the city council?
Correct.
Uh, now, the letter dated from Roselli, Clark and Associates was dated November 30th, 2011.
Correct.
Had you received that in November?
I received it the same day I sent it to the council. Uh, just a little background.
So would he have, why would he have signed that November 30th?
There's three separate reports, and I can have a detailed documentation from the audit. There's three separate reports that, um, have the same date, what, you know, they get issued at different times during the year, but
Yeah.
Because of reporting requirements, they're all dated the same date.
Okay.
Uh, but that, the, the management letter, I received it the same day that I forwarded it to the entire council.
And had you received preliminary reports that said all this information?
We got a draft version about three days prior.
Okay, so, uh, nobody saw this report before then?
Nope.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, so had you ever seen these graphs that showed free cash in our reserve, or the reserve ratio metrics that showed we're significantly below the state? Are any of those things that I mentioned in the management letter prior to that?
No.
No? Okay. So, uh, just as a reply to the mayor, uh, because the mayor and I used to meet quite frequently, uh, when he was a counselor, and, uh, going back as many as five years. And I'm a little disturbed that he would say that I never talked about putting money away. Uh, because he knows, and everybody who knows me knows, uh, that prior to ever getting on this council, in fact, Counselor Lucy's father, uh, would attest to this way back, uh, that I have been a fiscal conservative hawk on the budget for 25 years and implored this city to put reserves away because, and plan for the rainy day. And there is nobody up here who honestly would make any statement other than that. So to suggest that I haven't been suggesting this, but that I brought it up with this management letter and never called him, I got this last week, like the rest of you, like him. So, yes, I'm making specifics about the reserves based upon a report that implores us to put away specifically for the rainy day, for the trust fund, for pension and, and benefits issues, but anybody who knows me and knows how I operate in an organization outside of this, knows that, uh, that organization has just as much reserve as the city of Malden and is one-tenth of the size. So that is rather, you know, quite frankly, insulting to me. I don't think I insulted the mayor, I think he did a goo, good job. I said, I have a tragic vision. It's a different vision than his, it's a different vision than Counselor Anderson's. Next point I'd like to make, very quickly. When the mayor was in elementary school, I was teaching teens at the Malden YMCA. When the mayor was still in junior high, I was doing daycare with the Malden YMCA and a counterpart to Kid Stop at the time. When the mayor was, uh, entering high school and through high school, I was the coach of the swim team down at Malden High. When the mayor was first entering politics, I was at the YMCA, on the Malden YMCA board for 10 years as their treasurer. When the mayor is out there going to teen nights, that's great, but for him to suggest that I don't have teens in mind, or that I don't know what teens are thinking, is simply silly. I have four teens of my own at home. He has none. I have far greater knowledge of what teens are like than he does, based upon that. But I don't say he doesn't have good knowledge. I didn't say eliminate the teen center. I questioned us getting into leases at this time. Sixty thousand dollars today, and a five-year lease that's in that program that was put out there, that says a five-year lease, that would go sixty thousand all the way to seventy-two thousand. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not questioning his integrity, I'm not in questioning his commitment to the community. I'm saying we have different visions. Mine is a fiscally prudent vision, and I would suggest to you that a year ago, two years ago, that same mayor had a fiscally prudent vision. He may still, I don't see it that way. But I certainly think that he cares about the community greatly, he's delivered a budget that I agree with mostly, and I, all I've suggested is about a one and a half percent restraint on the budget and putting things aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kennon. Counselor Dark Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President, for speaking a second time, but, uh, to address some of the comments that His Honor the Mayor made. I too agree that a good amount of this budget I can support. Certain things, however, I cannot. And I, I really am not, and may, perhaps I misstated my argument, I'm, I'm really not trying to link us to Greece and Spain and things. I guess my greater point was there are conditions that are out of our control that we're going to have to react to. And I love that there's more money in the stim, in, in reserve. I think that's a good thing, I, I commend you for it, I'll say that right now, I commend you for it. And down the road, that's going to help us bonding and get our bonding rate up, it's going to help us save on interest. That's a good thing, we agree on that. I, I guess one of the things, though, is if we do look at the bottom line, and I, I realize you're making the argument about just the school department, everything else is only 1 percent, I appreciate that. But the folks at home see the bottom line. And, you know, part of what we're doing here is a bottom-line business. And the bottom line indicates a 6.5 million dollar increase. My motion, I believe, is modest, to take that 5 percent and put it towards something or give you the, the latitude to take it out of various places. I'm not saying rash things, like, for, for instance, we could, we have enough money to eliminate the bags this year. That's not your priority. Perhaps it isn't other members' priority. I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not advocating that we do that at this time, because we haven't addressed the program. And I have sat with you and am looking forward to be on the committee to look at the solid waste and disposal. So again, I'm not advocating for that. But if we wanted to do that, we certainly could. So, uh, again, just, just to reiterate that I believe in what you're doing, I think everybody here does. But we need to make sure that we're keeping pace with spending both from a CPI, related to the CPI and related to inflation, and related to growth historically. And I'm, I'm just asking for a little bit less, we are going to the levy limit. I mean, I, I have the DOR figures here, we're going right to the levy limit. And I guess my prerogative is just a little bit different. The counselor previous mentioned fiscal conservatism, I would ascribe to that. To me, it's the people's money. And the, the 5,762 people that voted on November 3rd, 2009, the 68 percent of the people, said, "We don't want local government to spend our money, we don't want to pay for bags." I believe that still is a sentiment in the community, and I'm trying to do my best, as the minority up here, to represent that view. And I respectfully ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dark Angelo. Um, my light is still on for the left, is it on?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just one more point.
Yep.
Just one more point here on, on what the mayor said. And I, uh, I would ask everybody in the audience, uh, whether here or at home, uh, because this is a common problem with those in government. When the school department has a 50.5 million dollar budget, and they go to a budget that is 56.1 million dollars, but they had requested to have 57, 58, whatever it was, and they only get 56.1 million dollars, their budget has increased by 11.2 percent by anybody out in the public or in their home. If I went to my boss and asked him for a 10 percent raise this year, but I got 5 percent, I didn't get a cut in pay. I got a pretty darn good increase. When the school department gets 11.2 percent increase in pay, and somebody suggests that they took a cut, it is simply irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm in the wrong button. Okay. Counselor Matheson, please.
So my concern about the budget is a little bit different. Um, in general, I very much like this budget, I think it's very creative, and I think if you gave 11 people the task of creating a budget, they'd all come back with 11 different budgets, and we'd all have something to say about each other's budget. Um, the one thing I found kind of curious, uh, when the budget was presented to us in the final form, ready for the vote, uh, was that approval of the mayor's appointment of the plumbing inspector was taken away from the city council. We didn't debate this, it didn't go through ordinance, it's an ordinance change. Frankly, I, I just feel like, you know, where we have two branches of government, this is one of the checks and balances we have. We have 11 intelligent people up here, and the mayor does a great job steering the ship, but the councils are elected to protect people. I feel like when the position is important, we shouldn't be giving up the ability to approve appointments. Where this is part of our ordinances, I don't understand why we would be voluntarily giving that up. I'm making a motion that we leave the council approval of the appointment.
Counsel, Counselor Matheson, that is actually what was decided, and out of the Finance Committee deliberations last evening, it was definitively left there. You're not losing your confer, you're not losing any confirmation authority.
Okay.
There was dialogue, we were, there was discussion about that, and obviously, earlier discussion, but the outcome of their discussion last night and their votes were to maintain confirmation of that position.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I believe so. Yep.
Confirmation? Could, could you distribute that document, please? That ha, has the confirmation on all those positions in there, please?
Not, not on all those positions, on the inspector, the plumbing inspector. That one remained. Were you suggesting all of the positions?
Well, those documents were distributed to us. That had been taken out, that had been stricken without deliberation.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it stricken, I just remember what happened last night in deliberation. It was, they voted to keep it, and it is in place in the budget that they're proposing tonight for adoption. That is. Counselor, Counselor Lucy. Point of information.
Counselor. Wait a minute, can I, Jimmy, Jimmy, that was not a committee. John can make that motion before we get to that session, and make the motion on the floor to leave that section. And we can leave Dyna and the campaign, they didn't have.
I'm still on the paper I saw during the ordinance committee. So is the subject. That was just before this, ma'am.
If they didn't have that paper, they came under the paper.
Okay. Um, point of clarification from our clerk, um, you didn't have that paper, which still needs, or still can be amended, at the point of discussion. Okay?
Which will be the next paper once we vote it.
Once we vote the budget, then you'll have the ability
Thank you.
To make that proposed motion. Okay. Sorry about that confusion, Counselor Matheson. I, oh, Counselor Spatafor.
No, I was just going to make a clarification, which has already been said, was, that was, uh, well, I don't want to say amended, that was voted on last night, the plumbing inspector, uh, and the, the other two that did not, it passed, but, uh, the mayor didn't support, was, uh, the amendment to have council confirmation on the, uh, teen center coordinator and the, which we thought were directors. Uh, it was a miscue, it was coordinator, and the recreational coordinator, which, again, we thought they were directors. So we tried to put in, or the council, the Finance Committee wanted to do council, mayor appointment, council confirmation, to make it even through that document that you're referring to on the plumbing inspector. Uh, we were, we deliberated, we voted on it, the mayor did make the distinction, it is not a director's position, they're coordinators, it did not support that, so those two are not in the budget, are the final ordinance, but the one you are referring to as far as the plumbing inspector
Was placed back in.
Was placed back in. I don't know if it was voted on, but it's placed back in.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, I see no lights. Counselor Kennon?
Just a point of information
Mm-hmm.
On that, uh, because I'm a little confused at this point, because I didn't have a document that said that. In ordinance, did we have a document that said that? Karen?
The, the paper that you're talking about is on the docket this week. It has not been referred to ordinance, it has not been referred to finance. The paper, as written, contained the section on plumbing inspector. If someone would like to remove it when we arrive at that paper, that would be an appropriate motion for someone to make at that time.
And would it be an appropriate motion at that time for all these new positions to have council, um, uh, yeah, confirmation? As, for instance, the water and sewer, uh, director, if that does happen?
It, it
Would it need council confirmation?
That position, as the paper is written now, that position would require council confirmation.
Okay, but these other two would not be, uh,
As it's written now
Because we named them coordinators.
As it's written now, the recreation coordinator and teen center coordinator would not require confirmation. That motion
But we could make that motion later.
Could be made, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Spatafor.
And I, again, for the second time, I apologize, to clarify too. Uh, Counselor Kennon, the other one that was in there that was a typo was the new combination, I think, I forget the name of it, to be honest, is the inspection services, uh, the planning, the permitting, um, which was written as mayor appointment, but city, was it city?
City.
It just said city approval. So we made a motion in finance to have that read, we believe it was a typo, to say, uh, mayor appointment, but council confirmation, not, uh, city, city council confirmation. So that is going to be confirmed by the council, just to clarify.
Did we vote that one?
That, well, yeah, the paper hasn't come for us yet. Correct, Counselor.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Spatafor. Now we're heading into the, uh, proposed, um, motions. Okay. No's.
So, the first motion was Counselor Lucy's motion to amend the budget in accordance with the committee report.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Did I hear a nay?
I'm sorry, so I heard nays from Counselors Kennon, Nestor, and Dark Angelo.
Dark Angelo.
Okay. So that passes eight to three.
Eight to three, that passes. Next motion?
And these are ones that Counselor
These are Counselor Kennon's motions.
And Counselor Dark Angelo's request of roll calls.
And there will be, um, roll calls per the request of Doc, uh, Counselor Dark Angelo.
The motion is to remove the position of Director of Water Utilities. Counselor Anderson.
No.
Crowe.
No.
Dark Angelo.
Yes.
Kennon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
So, that's, it's defeated, seven to four.
Seven to four, that's defeated. The next motion?
The next motion is to reduce the salary of the recreation director to $48,000. Counselor Anderson. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
No.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
No.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
And that's defeated, nine to two.
Defeated, nine to two. Next motion?
I'm sorry. I have to try and remember, repeat your votes. The next motion is to reduce the teen center budget by $64,000 and eliminate the lease on the building for a teen center. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. So, it's eight to three.
Eight to three, defeated. Next motion?
The next motion is to reduce the school department revenue account by $150,000.
And just for clarification purposes, on the school budget reductions that are proposed in these motions, my understanding is that, you know, we can certainly suggest and recommend a specific amount of funds, but we cannot, we can recommend where they could be looked upon for reduction, but we cannot direct them. And that is accordance to the MGL Chapter 71, Section 34.
Okay. So, Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No.
Defeated, eight to three. Next motion?
The next motion is to reduce the school department business manager budget by $62,000. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No.
Defeated, eight to three.
Yeah. Motion to remove $500,000 from school department, no M, and hold as a reserve in the city budget. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
No. Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. Three to eight, defeated.
Defeated, three to eight.
The next motion is to cut the executive department budget by $50,000. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. This one's two to nine, defeated.
Two to nine, defeated.
Motion that $525,000 in new spending be deleted from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
Yes.
Yes. Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. Defeated, seven to four.
Defeated, seven to four.
Motion to, to take the $1 million in indirect costs charged by the city to the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, be removed from the enterprise fund, and the money be used to lower water and sewer rates. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. So, it's defeated, eight to three.
Defeated, eight to three. Next motion?
The next motion is by Counselor D'Angelo to reduce new spending by 5% with cuts to be made where the mayor sees appropriate for a reduction of approximately $378,000. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
No. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Yes. Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. So, it's defeated, three to eight.
Defeated, eight to three.
And the final amendment is for the mayor to move 0.1% of the total budget appropriation excluding Water Sewer Enterprise Fund in an amount of approximately equal to $139,375. Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. So, it's defeated, three to eight.
That's defeated, eight to three.
And now, I think Counsel Lucy made a motion to adopt.
And on Counsel Lucy's motion to adopt as amended, also a roll call?
Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
No.
Kinnon.
No.
Lucy.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
No.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Altrino.
Yes.
Bucci.
Yes.
Yes. So, it's adopted, eight to three.
Budget is adopted, eight to three. Counsel Lucy.
Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion and move to reconsider in hopes of the same does not prevail.
So, for purposes of folks' understanding, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just like, point of information, don't you need to have three quarters to pass?
A majority.
The same night? That's the ordinance, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, do you want to explain? Okay. The motion has been made to reconsider. If you would like the budget not to be finalized and continue discussing this, vote yes. If you want to be done with it now, vote no.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson.
No.
No. Crowe.
No.
No. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
No.
Murphy.
No.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
No.
Altrino.
No.
Lucy.
Again?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bucci.
No.
No. So, reconsideration is denied.
Reconsideration is denied, eight to three.
Ordered that the city of Malden submit to the messages its legislature to passage in substantially the following form, an act relative to administrative reorganization of the city of Malden. Counselor Anderson.
On Counsel Anderson's motion to adopt, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, it is to adopt.
Except that John would like to make a motion to remove plumbing inspector.
Counsel Matheson, this is the time if you would like to make your motion.
For the inspector. So, do you want to make a motion to delete Section 15?
I'd like to make a motion to delete Section 15, which strikes at the words in city council, oh.
And removes the confirmation.
Removes the confirmation ability of the city council over the plumbing inspector.
Counsel Mur... Sorry, Counsel Kinnon.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would, I think we are out of order. Again, I think the rules state 40.01, the city solicitor shall, at the request of the ordinance committee, provide an opinion as to the form and legality prior to an ordinance being passed to be enrolled. I would request that we get an outside opinion on this. Not only that, the opinion that has been rendered shows absolutely no numbers on it. You know, we just received this, I guess, but the opinion that she has sent, when I went line by line, at least for the first four, and then said I'd like each individual one, it says, "Per the request of the ordinance committee, the ordinance changes and home rule are approved as to the form of legality." I don't question the home rule. I do question the ordinance changes. This is like a generic, went in the back room, typed it up at a quick request at the direction of whomever, and said, "Oh, I've replied now. This is shotgun, typical of what's been going on here." And so, I would request that we get outside legal opinion, whether it's the Attorney General or whomever it has to be, somebody unbiased before we move forward, because the rules clearly state 40.01 stages for passing ordinances, the city solicitor shall at the request of ordinance committee. The ordinance committee requested provided an opinion as to the form of legality prior to the ordinance being passed. That was the ordinance committee that requested it be in writing. This doesn't, this is like, and I could have gone out there and wrote this. We want an opinion on each and every item. All ordinances 40.02 shall pass through the following stages. First, a reading, passed to be enrolled, passed to be ordained. This can't be passed to be enrolled. From the way I read it, clearly, the city solicitor is going to say whatever you wanted to say tonight, so I would, again, like the council to get a, an outside legal opinion on this so that, so that we don't have to do that on our own. Thank you.
For point, Counsel Kinnon, this is about the home petition. We're not talking about the ordinance.
It's, we're not on the, okay. Then, even though the home petition is on here, I apologize when we get to that. You know my point now.
We'll, we'll...
I won't make the same motion. I will make the motion on the ordinance, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, Counsel Matheson. Counselor Matheson has a motion to remove Section 15, which would leave confirmation power over the plumbing inspector with the city council.
Okay. So, do you want to repeat that? Can you repeat that to the whole body, what his motion is?
Counsel Matheson has made a motion to delete Section 15 of the home rule petition, which would, which would allow council confirmation to remain over the plumbing inspector.
So, for clarification, we want it to remain with confirmation?
If the section is deleted, council confirmation will remain.
Mm-hmm.
If the motion is allowed, council confirmation of that appointment remains.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Row call, please.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
I'm sorry, point of vote here. So... A yes vote does what?
Leaves council confirmation to mayor appointment of plumbing inspector.
Okay, yes.
Yes. Counselor Kinnon.
Yes.
Yes. Lucy.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Yes. Altrino.
Yes.
Yes. Bucci.
Yes.
I just wanted to make another point, and I apologize for doing this after the vote. But last night, in part of deliberations with the Finance Committee, and again, I apologize if I was confusing people with, last night's vote, obviously, was just a recommendation for Finance Committee to have counsel confirmation. One of the requests that the mayor, one of the statements the mayor did make after we deliberated adding counsel confirmation to the coordinators was that one of his intents next year is to look at the entire organizational chart for the city and to align a lot of these jobs, so that some are not council approval, some are council approval, and make them more coordinated. So I felt it fair, at least, to say that one of his agendas, the mayor Christiansen did mention last night, was, one of his first things he's going to be looking at is bringing them all together in a uniform way, and hopefully, I think, by the council's vote, that the council has a say in the appointments. But he did, he did reference that last night at the Finance Committee meeting. I'm sure ECF has any questions about that, but, you know, I was one who supported adding counsel confirmation for a couple of those coordination positions. And my reasoning was, and I spoke to the mayor after, not that we didn't, you know, believe in his due process or his deliberations in vetting out the right person, but I think there's several councils here who knew there was an appointment put on the council a couple of years ago, that we had no say, and it was kind of a black eye on us, and that was the reason, not necessarily against this mayor, but maybe the future mayor, the future council, that's why we wanted to have some say inside the deliberations, and that was the intent, and the mayor did mention last night after, two motions did feel that he would at least start looking at bringing some uniformity to this process. So I did want to mention that out of all fairness to the committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Spetafora. I see no other lights. On Counsel Anderson's motion to adopt as amended, a roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crowe. Yes. Dark Angelo. Kinnon. Yes. Lucy. Yes. Matheson. Yes. Murphy. Yes. Nestor. Yes. Spetafora. Yes. Oltrino. Yes. Boochi.
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to nothing. It passes. It has been amended. Next order of business.
Being ordained that the revised ordinances of nineteen ninety-one be amended to make administrative structure, changes to the administrative structure of the city. Counselor Anderson.
On Counsel Anderson's motion to enroll, is a roll call. But the point of discussion? Counsel Kinnon.
Yes, I just want to make the same point to the City Council, that I think this is out of order. I think we have a rule book. Once again, I think we're not following the rules, and we're shotgunning a procedure. Pretty soon, I'm not sure why we have committees. We might as well have all our meetings right here on the floor. I'm good with that. I don't see the need to have committees anymore. We might as well do it this way, if we're going to shotgun everything. Thank you.
So Counsel Kinnon, are you doubting the ruling of the chair?
I am doubting the rule.
Then we need to take a vote. We should, if you're doubting the ruling, then this council can take a vote on that.
You should leave the chair.
Okay.
And you should come into this, here comes Counsel Anderson. Shall the ruling of the chair stand as the judgment, perhaps? If you agree with Counsel Boochi, vote yes. If you disagree with Counsel Boochi, vote no.
Okay, what we're going through now is a question of either supporting the ruling of Counselor Boochi. If you agree with her ruling, then the vote is yes. If you disagree with her ruling, the vote is no.
Mr. President, can I just go?
Her ruling? Okay.
Can you just go take like two steps back and just clarify exactly what we're going to vote on here? I just.
We're voting on the opinion of the, of the president that, to take this up.
This ordinance is properly before us.
That this ordinance is properly before us.
That the requirements of this rule have been met.
That the requirements of this rule have been met. That the city solicitor shall, at the request of the ordinance committee, provide an opinion as to form and legality prior to the ordinance being passed to be enrolled. So the council president has ruled that that presentation by the city solicitor was appropriate. That was her ruling, and now the question is whether we agree with her ruling or not. A yes vote will indicate that we agree with the ruling of the council president. We will call for a roll call.
Emma Landwick, yes?
And we'll end with the senior counselor, who is sitting in now as the.
Okay. Then we will start with Counselor Boochi.
Then we will start with Counselor Boochi.
Counselor Boochi. Yes.
You agree.
Counselor Crowe. Yes. Dark Angelo.
No.
Kinnon.
No.
Lucy. Yes. Matheson.
Yes.
Yes. Murphy.
Yes, but I agree. Yes, yes.
Yes. Nestor.
No.
No. Spetafora.
No.
No. Oltrino.
Yes.
Yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
So the ruling stands.
So the ruling stands by a vote of?
Seven to four.
Seven to four. And I'll relinquish the chair, back to the council president Boochi.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson.
Can I take this? Can I take that?
Mm-hmm. Okay, now, on Counsel Anderson's motion to enroll, roll call.
Would I suggest that perhaps Counsel Spetafora wants to change the term of the director water tolls from three years to one?
Counsel Spetafora.
I apologize.
Your light's on.
It was earlier.
It was relevant to a term change?
The term is reduced from eighteen days to probably three years to one.
Oh, okay, that's what they were talking about? Okay. I apologize, I couldn't hear, that's why. I want to make a motion that, in the paper presented before the Finance Committee last night, the term for the water director was a three-year term, and the motion was to, in pass unanimity, I believe, to make that a one-year term. Madam President.
Do we have it down?
Is that an ordinance?
Well, this is the paper before the Finance Committee, Counsel Nestor, was, in there, the recommendation was a three-year term. The Finance Committee passed, there was a motion to make it, my motion was to actually make all the positions that were in that financial, the ordinance changes, make it a one-year term. The mayor requested only the water, the water and sewer remain the one year, and the other would remain the three-year, and again, that's something they'd look at going forward to kind of bring these all in line. This is from the Finance Committee. That was just the vote that was recommended there, again, unanimously, so that was the recommendation.
So.
So we're going to make the change from a three-year term to a one-year term on the water director.
Your recommendation.
Correct.
You're making a motion to amend.
Making, excuse me, making a motion to amend the paper from a one-year, from a three-year term to a one-year term on the water director.
All right, we have a second. Counsel Kinnon.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Once again, point of information, is one year on only one person?
Yes, and I think the dialogue I remember last night was based on it being a new position and an opportunity to make that change.
And I, the recommendation, my motion was to recommend all those positions to be a one-year. The mayor had some questions and concerns, he asked me to speak with the Human Resource Director about changing that, and the only recommendation that we, that he wanted to support at that time was only the water. And again, he's here to speak if there's any questions about that, but my recommendation was for all of them, I didn't want to single on anybody, but the only one we went with was the water director.
So can I ask a question here? Did the, Madam President, Madam Clerk, point of information, and is the city solicitor here? Did the city solicitor review that? And the reason I ask that, is that a discriminatory practice? Are we setting ourselves up?
That's an excellent question, and I think the city solicitor would like to answer it.
And, you know, everybody's three, one person's one. I don't know if I can support that, because I think we're headed in, I think we're headed for a potential lawsuit there. Thank you.
Thank you, city solicitor. Could you respond to Counsel Kinnon's question?
And, no, as a, as a, as a legal premise, I don't think you're discriminating. As a legislative premise, that's up to this board to decide whether it's one year, two years, three years. That's your determination. But weighing in legally, again, that's subject to your decision in this ordinance. So I don't see that a case for discriminating where these are assigned directly by you. This is a legislative call on your part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you done, Counsel Spetafora?
I am.
Do you have a second on the motion?
And so now, roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crowe. Yes. Dark Angelo.
No.
No. Kinnon.
No.
No. Lucy.
Yes.
Yes. Matheson.
Yes.
Yes. Murphy.
Yes.
Nestor.
No.
No. Spetafora.
Yes.
Yes. Oltrino.
Yes.
Yes. Boochi.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's amended eight to three.
Amended eight to three. On Counsel Anderson's motion to enroll as amended, is also a roll call.
Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
Yes. Dark Angelo.
No.
Kinnon.
No.
No. Lucy.
Yes.
Yes. Matheson.
Yes.
Yes. Murphy.
Yes.
Nestor.
No.
No. Spetafora.
Yes.
Oltrino.
Yes.
Boochi.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's amended eight to three.
Next order of business?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Stephen McDonald, forty-two Delta Terrace, as a member of the Stadium and Athletic Field Commission. Very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor, confirmation is not required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Enrique Casada of three fifty-four Broadway, as a member of the Stadium and Athletic Field Commission, very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor, confirmation is not required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Laurie McDonald of sixty-seven Cleveland Street, apartment one, as a member of the Stadium and Athletic Field Commission. Very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor, confirmation is not required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Gene Pinkham, one twenty Adams Street, as a member of the Stadium and Athletic Field Commission. Very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint William Filios of one hundred Cross Street, as a member of the Cultural Council, very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor, confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy, this is a, I'm sorry, this is a new appointment, and what we typically do is move them to ordinance, for folks to be interviewed for these roles, so is this, I know we're not meeting to.
The council, the cultural council, they asked to at least be confirmed, their short members, and they prompted to think about.
So we're aware that we're not necessarily doing it the way we typically do it. Okay, I get it. On Counsel Lucy's motion to confirm, would be a roll call.
Don't these normally go to a confirmation committee?
Counsel Nestor, you're absolutely right. What we would do is need to request that we suspend docket rules, so that we can confirm these folks tonight.
How many we suspend docket?
All in favor? Motion?
There's no second.
Roll call.
On suspension of rules. Don't need a second to suspend rules.
On suspension of rules, council.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Rule, point, point of parliamentary interest, rule thirty-nine point zero three, appointment requirement confirmation. The council may by majority of vote, those members present, voting away for parole of reappearance to the ordinance committee.
You're absolutely correct, but there are times that we have suspended rules, and we know what those, well, those moments have existed in this last session, and that's what we're trying to do tonight, is suspend the rules.
And there's a motion to suspend.
And there is a motion to suspend those rules, and the motion to pass has been asked. All in favor?
No.
Wait, they asked for a roll call. Okay. So this suspensional rules requires, as council.
What Dark Angelo just read, this suspensional rules requires a majority vote. Okay?
Everyone understand it's a majority vote?
Yeah, can I, can I ask you a question?
Would you point it and speak into the?
Counsel Nestor, what's your question?
I don't know this individual, I've never met him, I don't have any background on him. Does anybody else in the committee have they met him?
You know what?
I have no information, I couldn't possibly vote on somebody.
The motion has been withdrawn. These folks will be going to committee. On Counsel Lucy's motion to send to ordinance, all in favor?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Michelle Markinowski of twelfth Garden Street Court, as a member of the Cultural Council, very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor, confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to the appointment committee. All in favor? Opposed? Next order of business?
Ordered that the following sums be in the same or hereby transferred to the following accounts. Four hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and five cents from grant surplus to stabilization. Three hundred thousand dollars from unemployment compensation to stabilization. Two hundred thousand dollars from temporary loan miscellaneous to stabilization. Ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents from custodial hall fee holdovers to facilities custodians overtime. Sixty-two thousand dollars from highway labor to highway gasoline. Forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars from revenue reserve to sand and salt labor. Sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars from TV salaries to border health salaries. Thirty-three thousand dollars from switchboard to human resources salaries. A hundred thousand dollars from public facilities labor to public facilities custodians salaries. Twenty-four thousand dollars from revenue reserve to workers' comp wages. Twelve thousand from executive grants to executive salaries. Seventy-six thousand dollars from highway labor to highway street lighting. Fifteen thousand dollars from highway labor to traffic salaries. Two thousand, five hundred dollars from revenue reserve to veteran services salaries. Thirteen thousand dollars from switchboard to veteran services subsistence care. Thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from library salaries to library gas and light. One hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars from temporary loan miscellaneous to police Quinn salaries. A hundred thousand dollars from Medicare insurance to police Quinn salaries. A hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars from switchboard to police Quinn salaries. Counselor Lucy.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to suspend financial rules, all in favor? Opposed? Counsel Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, Madam President, these are transfers at the end of the year, with our last meeting in June, all the accounts, mostly accounts, what will happen is if people have, if accounts has money in them, they get, there's transfers made to other accounts that may have not had enough and vice versa. There's some, a lot of these accounts are interdepartment transfers. There's some accounts that they're left over money in those accounts, and they're going into the stabilization fund, and the other accounts are just accounts that have either ran low, and these transfers are done every year in June. The Controller Chuck Rannigan is here tonight, any specific question on these accounts, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them.
I don't see any lights.
Yeah, I have a light.
Sorry?
Mr.
Mr. Rannigan, could you step up to the podium, please? Counsel Nestor.
Just the twelve thousand from executive grants to executive salaries, what is that executive grants account?
Executive, that's a appropriated line item that's been in the mayor's budget every year, so that's just an intra-departmental transfer to cover any potential deficits come year-end.
Okay, so that's funded through city funds, it's not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nestor, thank you, Mr. Rannigan. On Counsel Lucy's motion to adopt, it's a roll call.
Counsel Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
Yes. Dark Angelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Yes. Murphy.
Yes.
Nestor.
Yes.
Spetafora.
Yes.
Yes. Oltrino.
Yes.
Yes. Boochi.
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to nothing, adopted. Next order of business?
Ordered that the school department be authorized to pay prior year bills to the Massachusetts teacher retirement system in the total amount of fifty thousand, six hundred, fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents from the stabilization count, and prior year teacher stipends in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars from the school department FY two thousand and thirteen budget. Counselor Lucy.[1760.73] Counselor Lucy.
Counsel Lucy for the paper, but there is a light from Counsel Kinnon as well.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. This, again, this is the school department, this I believe, and again, Mr. Rannigan could answer this probably a lot clearer, it's something about there was a bill missed, and it's money owed that the school department didn't have it in their budget, and the city is making good on that money, that's all, I believe, something to that effect. Chuck?
Counsel Kinnon, do you have a question?
I'd like clarification on this one from the control, I want to understand what's happening here.
Mr. Rannigan, could you step up, please?
With the new superintendent coming in, with Sullivan and Rogers as the interim school business manager, they've been going through desk drawers, trying to clean up, you know, and get things going on the right track. In doing so, they discovered bills from prior fiscal years. In order for them to pay that, they need council approval, they can't pay using FY12 funds a prior FY11, FY10 bill. So during this whole process, they were in contact with the mass teacher retirement system and realized that they did owe money totaling over $50,000 to the MTRS. So because of that, we're in front of the council, the school department, asking for authorization to pay what is rightfully owed to the mass teacher retirement system.
How much?
$50,000.
And those bills were in desk drawers?
Correct. From what I've been told, yes. And again, this is --
What years are they from?
Between FY10 and 11.
And that was in the superintendent's office?
The school business office.
Downstairs?
Correct, a different office than the superintendent, though.
And so the money would be used in this year's current budget, that they hadn't spent, is that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rannigan. Counselor Nestor?
Yes, thank you, just clarification check, that's coming from the school department budget, correct, not the city's? Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, on the, on Council Lucy's motion to adopt, it's a roll call.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Crowe?
Yes.
Yes. Doc Angelo?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Yes. Lucy?
Yes.
Yes. Matheson?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Nestor?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Yes. Altrino?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Yes.
Adopted, 11 to nothing. Next order of business?
Order that the assessor prepare for implementation at the 30% residential tax exemption for tax bills effective January 2013. Counselor Kinnon.
Counsel Kinnon for the paper?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President.
And Nestor.
I'm sorry, and Counsel Nestor.
And Nestor. And I'm sure that Counsel Anderson, I know, will speak for him, will probably join us, but last December, I think, most of us were very disappointed when we got back from the state, the ability to raise the residential tax exemption to 30% from 20%. We had put in for a charter change because actually, to the current mayor's credit, he discovered that Somerville, he and I were talking, wanted to raise this because this encourages homeownership in Marlton. He discovered that Somerville and Boston, at that time, were the only two communities in the state that were at 30%, and they had gone to a charter change in order to get that approved, because you can only statutorily in the state go to 20%, which we have done in the last four or five years. So it came back late in the year, there wasn't enough time in the assessor's office to get this implemented, and I distinctly remember Counsel Anderson not understanding, because we had talked about it in June of the last year. So all this is saying is, please prepare, get ready, because we don't want to come in December and have somebody say, well, we don't have enough time to get this implemented, again. So I want to get this out there, you know, as an order or a resolution, whatever it is, make sure you're preparing for this, because at least, I think, some of us are coming forward and want this to happen. This will put another $150 to $200 in the average homeowner's pocket, and put the burden on the absentee landlords, which is something many of us, including the mayor, have been advocating for years. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me say that I support this wholeheartedly, but let me just make a clarification to the Counsel of Ward Six's comments about Counsel Anderson not understanding, and I think, I know, those are the words I think I heard you say, but for clarification, it was, I was befuddled by the fact that the assessor was telling us that because we had a new computer system, that he couldn't, didn't have time to figure out how to implement that, and maybe I was being polite by saying, I don't understand why you couldn't make this happen. It wasn't that I didn't understand, it was that I was very, very disappointed that they didn't take the time, well, put that as a major priority, to figure out how we get that money back to our residents of the city of Marlton, not that in this day and age, we should not have as an excuse to not be able to do this residential exemption, that we didn't have time to figure out the computer system. And so, bringing it up at this point, as Counsel Kinnon and Counsel Nestor are doing, is something that I wholeheartedly support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. On Counsel Kinnon's motion to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted. Next order of business?
Order that the city restore all perpetual care money removed from the cemetery department and make allowance to do so in the current year's budget. Counselor Kinnon.
Counsel Kinnon for the paper?
Yes, a point of information for the clerk here. I put this forward before having an answer, because in the current budget that you all have, it says that there's a revenue line that says perpetual care cemetery. In talking to Mr. Rannigan, he researched this and assured me that that is not the case, it is mislabeled, it shouldn't say perpetual care, and that it is actually coming from grave burials and whatnot, because perpetual care you cannot take from. That set aside in the cemetery. So I don't know how to withdraw this, city clerk?
I withdraw.
I make a motion to withdraw, because I've been assured that's not the case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's withdrawn. Next order of business?
Order that the city restore interest taken from the water enterprise fund immediately and make allowance for it in the current budget, as this money was mistakenly taken out of that fund and effectively overcharged the taxpayers for water during the last 17 years, and be a further order that these funds be used to credit the water rates and thus refund ratepayers this year. Counselor Kinnon.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, in this management report, again, that we all appear to have gotten last year, there is a write-up of a concern from the auditors that said they had discovered over the course of, I guess, 17 years, from 1994 through 2011, that money had been, which was interest from the water and sewer enterprise area, had been taken over to the city side by the former treasurer and used in the general fund. That needed to be reimbursed to the water and sewer enterprise fund. I once again have been assured by Controller Rannigan that during the course of this year, they have indeed done that. I would ask, however, based upon that, that the rates, again, if that money is indeed in the account, that the rates, again, for this fiscal year be adjusted to reflect that money, because it is something, any money that's earned in there should actually, you know, by way of not having a larger increase, go back to the ratepayer. So I would suggest that that would be the proper course, but I am willing to withdraw this motion, because again, I have been assured by the controller that this adjustment has been made that is in this management letter that we received. Thank you.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to withdraw, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Being ordained the chapter four of the revised ordinances of 1991, be in the summary hereby further amended as follows. By providing that future increases in any budget be capped at no more than CPI plus 2% in any year, and by providing that no department budget be increased by greater than 50%, more than the overall revenue increase to the city budget for that year unless there is a structural change that the city council approves via ordinance or that two-thirds of a council approves to override. Counselor Kinnon.
Yes, Madam President, once again, taking right out of the management letter, which says we need to start putting money aside, the thought process much in line with some of the things that Counsel Doc Angelo said, would take the city budget, not allow us to increase it above, above 2%, above CPI. So over the course of the last 20 years, CPI has averaged 2.65%. That would mean that we could not increase the city budget greater than 4.65% if that was the same case. For instance, this past year, CPI, Counsel Doc Angelo said was 3%, and so we could have increased the budget 5%, which indeed is what occurred this year. But it adds a caveat in there, again, I just want to send this to ordinance, but I want everybody to understand what I'm sending in, that would say no department would be able to be increased above that, above, 25% above that. So for instance, in a year like this year, we have a 5%, we would have been able to give the same level as we give this year, but no department, including the school department, and I make it quite clear that I'm not worried about any other department eating everybody's lunch here, but the school department, we can't seem, as a council, to check the growth. And I just, once again, point back to the fact that they have had real dollar increases of 93%, and there is no other department. Every other department has had real dollar decreases in the last 20 years. So unless the council comes up with a mechanism to slow that and to really think about that on a year-to-year basis, they will continue to grow until, for instance, this year, we had 6-point-something million dollars available for growth in the city, and we gave 5.6 of it to the school department, or 86% of it. We continue down that path, and the 57.5 cents that we spend of every dollar on education, and we were spending 36, 35.5, 20 years ago, will suddenly become 70% and crowd everything else. This just gives you a break, it also allows you, if you really, and in fact, this would have happened anyways tonight, it allows you the ability to override yourself with a two-thirds vote. So the folks who have the vision that you have tonight would have prevailed and would have overridden it, but it sets in place an idea that we got to slow the growth of the school department, whatever it takes in terms of real growth, and whatever money is left over, if we grow at that, if we grew at 6, if we had revenue increases 6% and grew at 4.9 or 5, we'd put the 1% away. So I'd like to send this to ordinance for more work, but at least it would give us a framework, and it is in line with what this management report implores us to do, which is get reserves put away. Thank you.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to refer to ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, I have a light on, Counsel Doc Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak briefly about this. I do support this motion, I think it's wise that ordinance consider this, maybe not exactly as it's stated, but work to that, and invite members of the administration to come down, and let's see if we can put some tables together that show a glide path of spending and revenues and, you know, projections going forward, so that we can start crafting the models for one year out, three years out, five years out, 10 years out. I think it's wise, it's fiscally prudent, it's indicated in the management letter, it's indicated in the Department of Revenue report that we got, I think any CPA will tell you it's a practice by any multimillion-dollar corporation that they endeavor to do, so I fully support this, and I hope everybody can too. Thank you.
Seeing no more lights, on Counsel Kinnon's motion to refer to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Being ordained that section 9.28A of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended relative to fees for disposal of solid waste. Counselors Kinnon and Doc Angelo.
Counsel Kinnon.
Yes, thank you, once again, Madam President. This ordinance, which I revised and sent over to Madam Clerk, stated that we would, restated the ordinance to give one free barrel, either by sticker on the barrel or by a barrel that the city would sell to the consumer. It would be revenue neutral, because it would raise the price of the bags, so that you could get a barrel, 32-gallon barrel, with a cap, stuff it all, and on the, if you were to go get a bag, after that, two bags would be, that would cost you $3. So by my calculations, this would be revenue neutral, it would incent people to do the right thing. I'd be more than happy to go over this in ordinance with people, but clearly, as the mayor has, on the campaign trail, made certainly, I won't say promises, but certainly some things, that this would be modified, I am proposing to modify the pay as you throw, send it into ordinance to make the city cleaner, more convenient for people storing their trash outside, and give them that one free barrel. Again, the numbers are something that I feel comfortable with. As you may or may not recall, when it first came out, the revenue that was going to be raised was 2.5 million. I have a formula-driven spreadsheet that showed that it would be 1.5 million, and indeed it came in at 1.5 million. So I'd just like to send it to ordinance so that we can get to work on this, because it's clear the residents want some modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. Counsel Doc Angelo?
Thank you, Madam President, again, and I think this is a good indication of our willingness and how much we want to work with the administration. I know the mayor has been up here in previous weeks and indicated that he is putting together a task force on this issue, maybe this can be a piece of that. We do have to try to solve for this, it's overwhelming, the majority of people don't want it, and, you know, so I support this fully, and let's get the work done, and we'll all work together to get this done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Doc Angelo. On Counsel Kinnon's motion to refer to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One no?
Counsel Lucy.
Counsel Lucy. Next order of business?
Being ordained that section 3.35 of the revised ordinances of 1991 is amended, be further amended relative to the regulation of billboards. Counselor Spatafora.
On Counsel Spatafora for the paper?
Thank you, Madam President, I apologize, I know this was not central ordinance, it came out pretty quickly today. The reason why is I've been, had the pleasure of serving as a side-ordance chairman for the city of Marlton several years. This is more of a clarification that I asked the city clerk to make. As probably most people don't know, there is a pretty extensive side-ordinance that I'm pretty proud of, Counsel Lucy is on that committee as well. There are some proposals right now to put up billboards, which by our definition of side-ordinances would be illegal and not allowed. However, in certain areas of parts of Marlton that encompass Route 1 in particular, they're under the domain of Mass Highway in the state, we have no say in those particular signs. So I asked the city clerk to make sure we put something to ordinance that I wanted the public to know, that it is not the city of Marlton's ordinance allowing this, it is a state requirement that we cannot circumvent. So again, this is just a reclarification of the billboards that fall under the state's domain, not our domain, and that's why I wanted to get it out before the summer break, because there are some proposals before -- because there are some proposals before the state. They do come to the city, but we cannot approve, not a die. They are structural, we do get to approve the structures on a building permit, but other than as far as the overall size of those billboards, we have no say. There is a revenue component that the city does share revenue in that, but again, it does not fall underneath our side ordinance. So I wanted to make sure there's a clarification, not only for the residents, but more importantly, the businesses that feel sometimes that this ordinance can be challenging and cumbersome, but again, it's something that's not in our domain. So again, I appreciate the committee's support, the council's support rather, and I do apologize for not getting this to ordinance sooner. Thank you, Madam President.
I see no lights, on Counselor Spatafora's motion to enroll, all in favor? I'm sorry, it's an enrollment, we have to do a roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crowe. Yes. Doc Angelo. Yes. Cannon. Yes. Lucy. Yes. Matheson. Yes. Murphy. Yes. Nester. Spatafora.
Yes.
Altrino. Bucci.
Yes. And the final vote will be eleven to nothing. On Counselor Spatafora's motion to suspend rules, all in favor? Opposed? On Counselor Spatafora's motion to ordain, the roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crowe. Yes. Doc Angelo. Yes. Cannon. Yes. Lucy. Yes. Matheson. Yes. Murphy. Yes. Nester. Present. Spatafora.
Yes.
Yes. Altrino. Yes. Bucci.
Yes. Ordained, eleven to nothing. Next order of business.
Ordered that mayor be authorized to file applications for grant alone assistance with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Counselor Lucy.
Counselor Lucy for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. We had voted last week to continue what we've been doing the last two years about getting loans to fix the water pipes in the city. This is just paperwork that needs to be filed with that request with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
Seeing no lights, all on Counselor Lucy's motion to pass, all in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next order of business.
Resolved is the sentence of the city council that the traffic commission install a raised crosswalk on Cross Street in front of the west side entrance of five seventy-six Cross Street, from the east side of Cross Street to the west side of Cross Street. Counselor Cannon.
Counselor Cannon. Move to traffic.
On Counselor Cannon's motion to pass, all in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next order of business.
Under suspension of docket rules, the claim of Paul Eby, eighty-five Sillan Street.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor? Opposed? On Counselor Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all in favor? Opposed? To finance. Next, next order of business.
The standing agreement on finance, to whom was referred paper number eight, series of two thousand and twelve, having considered this, make the following report. Ordered that the mayor be authorized to enter into a section one oh eight loan agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for activities at properties jointly owned by Tricap and Bread of Life. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Lucy for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. The finance committee actually took this, this paper up probably last February. It was voted out five to one, there were still some questions out there, so I believe the mayor's here to speak on that paper tonight.
All rise with the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the members. First, I want to say not much has changed from when you first considered this paper. I am in full support of us being able to apply for these funds, Madam President. What I want to do is underscore that word, "apply." Tonight is about asking you, us, to apply to see whether or not we can get the loan. What I'm comfortable about is that if we do receive the loan and things don't materialize with the project at hand, the city still has the right to be able to get out of the loan and not be locked in for X number of years. The other thing that I think fits neatly beyond what, you know, these two organizations, Bread of Life and Tricap, do for the city, is that it just so happens that when the repayment of the section one oh eight loan would begin, there is a previous section one oh eight loan that will retire, and the amount of those funds that will retire will be more than enough to cover the payments that will be due on the loan before you tonight. One other caveat that I think is, you know, should be of interest to the council, is that, you know, the Bread of Life has stated that the present allocation that they receive now through the community development block grant, which is for ten thousand dollars, they would apply that to the payments that would be due in two thousand and sixteen, depending on what financing scheme we adopt. So I think there's enough there. Obviously, I've been a part of those organizations, and, you know, back to this priority-based model, I think this is something that we should do, and I think you could tell here tonight, I think the rest of the city does as well. So I'm here to entertain any questions, but I would support your consideration and adoption of this loan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to my far left, Counselor Cannon.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, I wish this wasn't together. I wish it was Bread of Life. I give the whole amount to Bread of Life. But I need to understand the tri-city community, and this, they're creating housing, right?
Right.
And what kind of housing, you know, I had heard at one point it was veterans' housing, which I'd be a hundred percent, you know, for. I'm not, as you know, in support of building anymore, anymore, you know, what we would call, I guess, project housing or any kind of affordable housing, and it's not because I'm against the poor. I think it's time for other communities to do their piece, and we have, for years, been doing ours. It's a growing population, so I just, and our schools are certainly suffering because of our overburden, because of having done many of these things in the past with all the good intentions in the world. But again, it is time for other people to do their part. So if you could just go into the housing for me, that would be great.
Yeah, to answer the council's question, I think, you know, you have to look at this as a, as project of the whole, you know, so let's say the cost is three million dollars, you know, give or take. Bread of Life would be responsible for half, Tricap would be responsible for the other half, and we do have the, you know, the president here of Bread of Life on the council. So what I envision this section one oh eight loan going toward is the Bread of Life piece. You know, Tricap, from what I understand, has the resources in order to take care of their half of the project. I can't speak to where they are on what component of housing it will be, but, you know, based on what I heard last, it was going to be geared toward veterans' housing. But even if it wasn't, you know, I believe the reputation of Tricap, at least my dealings with them, has been very good, so I don't envision anything in there that would take away from the city. But I think what we should do is remain focused on where this one oh eight loan would be going toward, and that's the Bread of Life. They're the ones that, in order for this whole thing to work, they need the section one oh eight loan. And I wouldn't be here, I probably would be here before you, but I think what makes me even more confident to be here before you, again, is the timing of this loan, where we do have a section one oh eight coming off the books shortly, which is going to more than cover the payments that would be due. So, you know, I, again, think, you know, you probably want to focus more on the Bread of Life aspect, who is the ones that will be utilizing the proceeds of the one oh eight loan.
But, but if we give the loan, it won't be going to Tricap?
Yeah, I think the way I envision it, and I think the council can speak on it as well, this five hundred thousand dollar section one oh eight loan would go to the financial pot of the Bread of Life piece to this puzzle.
Okay. All right, you know, and I'll just make this statement, socioeconomic balance is the key to the life and the future of any city. And the challenge I have with Tricap and any of these groups is not their mission, their mission is noble. But if we get, you know, our public schools, I think I saw a new figure that says sixty-five, it might even be seventy percent, a free and reduced lunch. We are nearing that tipping point, and again, I just think it is incumbent upon us to have a vision that would make the community socio-economically diverse. And, and we need to slow the growth and let the Wellesleys, Westons, Sudberrys, Bedford's, they need to do their job.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think we may respectfully disagree on, you know, on where we stand, but I don't think these ten or eleven or twelve units would go to address that issue. So I think, again, my advice would be, you know, focus on the Bread of Life aspect of this loan, and I think, you know, if you, you know, calculate reputation as everything, they have it, and I think it's worth us, again, I want to focus back on how I began, which is tonight is asking for us to apply, to see if we can even be in a position to get the loan. And if things don't materialize between now and when we're notified that, you know, we do have the loan, we can always pull out. But tonight, we have to get in the game, and if we don't do it tonight, we lose another two months. Who knows what other city or town across the state, across the nation, might swoop in and get this loan that we might have had a chance of getting, and pulling this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get Bread of Life into one location again. I don't know if we'll get that opportunity.
I see more lights. Counselor Cannon, you finished?
I'd just like to hear from Counselor Matheson on the housing aspect, I'm very interested in the housing aspect.
He certainly does want to speak to it, but he wants to give opportunity to his colleagues. That, no, that being said, to my left, is it, okay, Counselor Doc Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very well said, we are in agreement here, and just to show the people at home in the audience, I'm not a hard-hearted man here, we're talking about the budget and squeezing nickels and pennies. This is something to me, though, that is, quite frankly, a matter of life and death to a lot of families in Malden, and we have, to me, we have to support this. It helps two longstanding organizations here in the city who I have faith in, I have faith in their leadership, and it's going to turn a property that's dilapidated, that's blighted, into a totally renovated new place, and really, you know, if we're going to have a food pantry, then let's have the best food pantry, and I think this what, that's what this project has the potential to be. So I think we, we need to support this, there's a great need in this community, and this is, this is not a matter of just dollars and cents. A lot of the things we went over earlier in the evening, we're talking about fiscal policy, long-term implications, things like that. This, this is, I look at it as an advance on money that they're already getting anyways. So to me, that's what makes this completely fiscally responsible. The funds are already there, both of these organizations are proven fundraising organizations, they both run very, on shoestring budgets, they do a great job, to Counselor Cannon's point earlier, they're nonprofits that are really maximizing every dollar. So I think that's why we have to support this and make sure that this goes forward for the timing aspects that the mayor indicated, I think that's important. And again, just having confidence in the people that the organization has produced, whether it's the current president or the former president, and all of the other board members involved here. That's why I'm in support of it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Doc Angelo. Counselor Altrino.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I think I'm confused, to be very honest with you, because I think I heard it differently when it was brought to finance, because I didn't believe in finance we were giving authority to apply rather than giving authority to grant. I was just talking in a side with Counselor Doc Angelo, and I'm still confused because they, Bread of Life currently gets, and this might be some from Mr. Woschowski, some questions, they currently get ten thousand dollars per year, or fifteen thousand?
Ten.
Ten. So they would be requesting an additional fifteen thousand?
No. I think what, the way it would work, Counselor, is that they would be willing to forego that current allocation and apply that to the payments that would begin paying back the one oh eight loan in two thousand and sixteen.
So we would give them an advance of five hundred thousand, is that correct? And out of the five hundred thousand, how much will be paid back?
Well, it's over twenty years, so the loan will be paid back in full.
The loan will be paid back in full to?
HUD. To the federal government.
To the section one oh eight program.
Correct.
Now, what happens, Mayor, and I'm looking at a budget that Mr. Counselor Matheson sent me, they have budgeted that they need to raise philanthropic contributions at eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Is that in already?
No.
Okay, and what happens if that's not in?
Well, that will be a factor in determining whether or not we move forward. That's why I stated at the outset, you know, this would allow us to apply, to be notified and say whether or not the loan be ready. I think during the interim, the Malden Redevelopment Authority would be working on gathering the information, you know, you're pointing out right now. You know, the pro forma is making sure that they have met their obligation on the other aspects of the funding components that would be needed to, to make this project happen. And if that weren't to happen, obviously, that would be a roadblock, you know, for us.
But they're already in the building, is that correct?
Yeah, they're renting.
Oh, they're renting, so they want to purchase the building?
Precisely.
Expand the services, which is.
Well, yeah, I think what I think, I also find, yeah, I also find a benefit to the city is, you know, we have been for many years trying to come up with something that would house the entire operation. As you know, Counselor, we had the pantry on Main Street at one point, we have the kitchen where we serve the meals at St. Paul's, so this would be an effort to try and bring the entire operation together. I think the one thing we all agree, and I know both organizations are pleased to this point, is, you know, having the ability for residents to be able to not have to line up on Main Street has already been, you know, a real benefit to the organizations and the city as a whole. So this would be the, an effort to, once and for all, purchase the property and make that their home.
And is any of this funding based on CBG money, because we, we've been getting cut in CBG money, and there are almost twenty organizations currently receiving funds. If CBG money continues to be decreased by the federal government, I'm assuming it may, I'm not sure, does that affect their five hundred thousand dollar loan?
We're not sure at this point, I think that's one of the contingencies we would build in, you know, during the next several months. You know, for instance, another one that we would try and work out with both organizations, I know, again, Counselor Matheson's here, is that, you know, we would require a lien equal to the amount of the one oh eight loan in case something were to go awry, you know, if the money was ultimately transferred. So I think I can assure you, you know, we do have Steve Woschowski here tonight, that we would build in all the precautions based upon, I think, all the valid points that the council has raised the past several months to make sure that, you know, the loan would be used in a way that would ultimately result in what's being proposed here tonight.
Okay, and last question, I don't mean to, it's just, you know, it's a very important issue, and I want to give it as much attention as possible. If the ten thousand dollars that they're going to forego goes back into CBG money, and say we don't get cut, does that free up ten thousand dollars for other organizations to apply or get increased?
Well, it all depends on how, you know, what financing scheme is chosen. I mean, you could do a fixed rate over X number of years, or you could go to an interim financing scheme where, you know, you pay little upfront, and then you start to pay the regular payments in two thousand and sixteen. I think that's the scheme that, you know, we're sort of looking at this point. But I think, you know, to your point, those answers would be decided. But I think, you know, to your point, those answers would be decided as we moved along once we had a little bit more clarity from HUD as well as the pro forma and where they're going to be at with respect to the other funding schemes they need to pull this off.
So I just want to make sure that if this is done, that the organizations that currently get funding, the 20 or so that Mr. Woschowski comes every year?
Sure.
And they're all great organizations. They won't lose out.
Correct. Again, I think what helps us, Counselor Altrino, is that, you know, that Section 108 loan that's going to be retiring shortly?
Right.
The value of that is close to $200,000. So when you take out, depending on the financing scheme you pick, you know, if you went with the interim financing scheme and you were paying, you know, $36,000 over 18 years, not including the first two years where you do, you know, a low amount, it'll more than offset, you know, the cost of the loan.
That loan is currently with the city of Malden, though, to build a senior center, is that correct?
Well, it's a Section 108 loan that we borrowed, just like we're proposing to borrow.
And the city pays that back to the 108 loan, is that correct?
No, we pay that back to the federal government, if I'm not mistaken. I see, is Mr. Woschowski here? Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct. So any, yeah, any Section 108 loans are granted by the federal government? We then pay them back.
Right. And then would if Bread of Life or that organization can't, and yes, say six or seven, continue to pay that $25,000 or so per year? Who assumes the responsibility or liability on that?
Well, I think that's where we would put in the proper protection. So, you know, maybe, you know, one idea is having a lien to make sure that if that were to occur, the city's protected, you know, in terms of?
A lien on?
On the property.
On a nonprofit property?
Well, I mean, we're granting $500,000.
Right.
I mean, I think you've raised a great point during the past couple of months. There should be protections in place, you know, for the city in case, which I don't believe is going to happen under, you know, Councilor Matheson's leadership.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying it does.
This thing will, I think this will work. And I think there's enough precautions in there if it doesn't, perchance, the city's protected.
So all you're looking for tonight is that we allow you to apply. Once you apply, will our, will my concerns be addressed at that point before we grant?
Yeah, we'll come back to you with a full-blown plan.
Okay.
You know, I think we want to give Mr. Woschowski the time again to work out, you know, these issues that have been addressed tonight. But yeah, there'll be another bite at the apple, I guess.
Because a few months ago, when I voted no, that was not explained. That was, I thought it was, just do the money, we had no budget, no anything. And I'd do it for any organization that needed it. I'm not saying that. I just can't do that if other folks are going to lose out or we had no information. So tonight would be to apply, and you would come back and hopefully be able to, Mr. Woschowski, address those concerns.
Yes.
So I would support that, that allow you to apply and, and look forward to more information as you get the ball rolling. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I look at Bread of Life, you can, I don't have any questions, I don't think. Been a long night. I look at the Bread of Life as one of those organizations that are very unique. Not only the service they provide, but in trying to get them housing, too. I mean, they've for years tried to be a place, and for one reason or other, it just wasn't a good fit. I personally was down there, my insurance agency was in that building for three years down there, not by choice, it just by, you know, we had to move somewhere, and it was, it fit the purpose for a while, but, you know, the building was cold in the winter, and you died in the summer. So I like the idea that even tearing it down and putting up a building more focused and back, because even the frontage of that building's difficult because people coming in out of that driveway. So, you know, I think Bread of Life certainly has displayed a history in the city of, the city at least giving them the opportunity to find a permanent home, you know, to get situated, to keep on providing the services they provide, because it's an awesome organization. And, you know, over the years, I think through outreach of Mike Sharon and, you know, Tom Fagley and, you know, others, I think, and yourself included, more people have come to realize, and the Browns I see out there, too, I always have to include the Browns. The more and more and more people have realized the good that they do. And, you know, there's many of us that, you know, will go down the day before Thanksgiving, you know, cut the turkeys. It's been amazing the amount of turkeys you get now. And then some even deliver them on Thanksgiving. So it's really a great organization. I think this will give them an opportunity to finally find a permanent home, which they do need, to continue that, the services they provide. And I have all the faith that if they can get through all the hurdles they have, I'm sure that we, things put in place to protect the city's investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucy. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you. Mayor, I just, for a point, if I could ask you a question, because I guess I'm a little confused coming out of the previous discussions that we had about this. Because I had some concerns about, I want to fund Bread of Life and do right by them, but I was concerned about other organizations that might come to us for similar loans and how we would, you know, kind of, you know, choose between other, you know, organizations that have great missions also. But in answering Counselor Altrino's questions, I wondered if maybe I misunderstood what was happening in some of the previous meetings. And it goes to the question about the repayment of the loan. I was under the impression that Bread of Life would not be repaying this loan, that this was truly, I'm going to say, a gift. And we do talk about the $10,000 that they were currently getting, that once again was also a gift. But my understanding of the financial aspect of this is that they would forego the $10,000 and that the 108 loan that's currently in place, that's retiring, that has a monthly dollar value associated with it, would really make up the difference with the $10,000 to pay this. So when Counselor Altrino was talking about having, you know, I'm not sure the exact word to use, but kind of having things in place so that the loans would be repaid, that loan is not being repaid. And I just want to make sure that that's very clear. This is, this is a gift to Bread of Life of $500,000 from the, from the 108 loans.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd characterize it as a gift.
Well, I want to say gift, but I mean, but they're not repaying on a monthly basis. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, they're going to be repaying a portion of it, is under one scheme. Again, this has to be all worked out in the coming months. But one idea is that the $10,000 that they currently receive from Community Development Block Grant would be applied to the payments that would be required to pay back the loan. So of, for instance, if it was $36,000, they'd be willing to take the $10,000 they get now, you know, assign it to the payment, which will bring it down to $26,000.
And the $26,000 would not be coming from them, though?
Correct.
Right. So I just wanted, I mean, I voted this out of committee favorably, but just listening to Counselor Altrino, I think his questions, the answers to his questions, I wasn't sure that there was enough clarity around that point. I just want to make sure we all know what's happening here, so.
Yeah. And the other thing we're hopeful, Counselor Murphy, is by doing this, the capital funds, the other aspects of the financing scheme that will be needed to pull this off will follow. I think, as many of you know, you know, a lot of donors and granters and what have you are waiting to see, you know, what they have to begin with before they start, you know, distributing funds. So we think also a plus to this is that will start to generate, you know, the other aspects they will need to make this a reality.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. I'm coming your way. Counselor Nester?
Thank you. Counselor Murphy, I'm a little confused as well. Are you saying that originally when this was brought before us, my understanding was there was $25,000 that was going to come directly out of the CBDG program each year? Now, are you saying that that's not the case? We're just rolling one fund, we're rolling one loan over into the next and paying this?
No. Well, I guess I'm, I was trying to understand some of the answers that Counselor Altrino was getting and kind of put it together with the information that I had from our previous meetings. And my understanding of the way I came out of the meeting a couple of months ago was that Bread of Life would forego the $10,000 that they normally get out of CBDG money. And that there was a loan, a current loan, that I believe someone said was taken out to pay for the senior center, and I believe that's what I had heard also. And when that retires, the money that was being used to pay that loan off would then be moved to pay off this $500,000 loan that would be taken out under Section 108 for Bread of Life. So the way Counselor Altrino's, well, the way your questions were going, and the mayor just said that maybe Bread of Life is going to contribute to some point, but when we left that last meeting, I was not under the impression that they were going to contribute any monies back. This is the first I've heard of them contributing monies back into a loan. So it's a bit confusing, I will agree. But I wanted to make sure, Counselor Altrino, that you were?
Can we have Steve Woschowski?
Clear on, or at least that maybe that I was clear on what was going on, so.
So for a point of information, can we ask Steve Woschowski to come up and field some questions from the counselors? So, Mr. Woschowski, can you shed some light on the confusion that exists?
Yep. I think I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's a little bit right. And everybody has a pretty good recollection of how we started this. We did, when we came down initially with the paper, asked for permission to apply for a $500,000 HUD Section 108 loan that we estimated might cost $25,000 a year. Based on the, and that money, we were going to finance without affecting the program because we were telling the council that in 2015, we were going to pay off, actually, it's the loan that we borrowed to do the work at the high school and the library. That would free up about $184,000 a year. That's currently coming out of the block grant program that would be available back into the program. So that it would have a net effect of not really hurting the overall CBGB program so we could continue to fund all those public services that you mentioned, Counselor. But based on the discussion that came about, and in talking to the mayor, we went back and we asked the TRICAP, the people in TRICAP and the Bread of Life. We want, first, we wanted to see the numbers before we came back down to kind of satisfy ourselves at the Redevelopment Authority that their proposed construction costs seemed to make sense. And we recently got those numbers and looked at them, and they, the numbers appear to be very reasonable and very doable. Certainly, they're, combining with TRICAP, I think, has really helped the Bread of Life because of TRICAP's experience and ability to, to pull projects off and build them and maintain them pretty well. And the Bread of Life has been, I think all of you know, has been working for years to try to put together a, a plan and a program to generate enough money to build a facility like they're talking about. We had been suggesting over the last few months and talking to Counselor Matheson that there should be a, a payment program, that they should contribute something back to amortize this loan. So it isn't all necessarily on the city. And we asked for that, we asked for kind of information on how they thought they were going to do that. And we had a meeting, and they had proposed this plan where this $10,000 that they typically receive annually from the CBGB program, they would accept, but pay $10,000 back to the city from another fund, because you actually can't use block grant money to, for a public ser, or a public service program, can't use block grant money to amortize the debt. It has to be, you give them $10,000 for services, it isn't for debt reduction. But they had indicated they would take $10,000 from another source and pay that back to the city to amortize this debt. So they, in fact, they are proposing to pay this back. And over the next few months, as we look at the pro formas, and we have a very good development cost analysis, we think we want to see an operating pro forma from the whole operation to see if there's ways that we might be able to squeeze more money out of it to actually pay this whole thing. But certainly, they are making the contribution to amortize this debt so that it becomes less of an obligation for the city of Malden and for the block grant program. They've also, we told them, you're going to have to agree to a lien on the property. HUD is going to require it as well as I would recommend that the city require it as well to guarantee payment of the loan in the event that something goes wrong, which none of us hope, and I don't think any of us expect will. But I think this proposal is certainly at a point now where you can comfortably authorize us to apply. It's going to take three months for the HUD Boston office to review. They're certainly going to ask for more information, although they've been told about the project. They've indicated to us they really like it. They like the collaboration between two public service agencies. They like the financing mechanism whereby there's multiple sources of public and private money going into it. I did speak to a foundation representative that the Bread of Life had applied to, who indicated that if this gets moving along, would give them a substantial contribution. So, and I think the costs have been fairly apportioned between what TRICAP's proposing to do and what the Bread of Life is proposing to do. And to your point, Counsel, all of the $500,000 in the pro forma is going to the Bread of Life. None of it is going on the TRICAP side. So I would certainly recommend that you allow us to apply. We've got probably six, seven months of work to do before this thing would be ready to be executed. And as the mayor said, you come back down, and we can continue to work on the details and hopefully come up with a clearer and, I think, better package for the, for you to consider and approve. Mr. Woschowski, if CBDG money, I think, is being cut every year, you know, threatened to be cut every year, if that is cut going forward for the next 18, 20 years, whatever the loan is, will they receive the $10,000 every year and just returning it back as payments? Or will that be cut proportionally? Well, nothing would be cut proportionally. The recommendation of how to spend that portion of the community development budget rests with the mayor to recommend in consultation with us, but for you all to approve. So I wouldn't say it would be cut proportionally. It may not be cut at all. Okay. All right. I think I could support, I think I could support, you know, making a application, but I'm not sure under these financial situations that we're looking at now, if this comes back to us the same way, I don't, I don't think I could support it going forward. But I am supportive of moving ahead with the, with the grant application.
Thank you, Counselor Nester. Counselor Altrino?
Just a quick question for you, Mr. Woschowski. I'm sorry, but?
It's okay.
Approximately, they need $25,000 per year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. $10,000 they're going to forego.
Right.
That's a $15,000 difference. Where does that $15,000 come from?
From the CBGB program.
From the 1-point-something million we get?
Yes, right.
Okay. So CD, CDGB will actually be, will actually have $25,000 of it?
Well, it'll have a net payment back, or a net reduction of $15,000. However, that would, under the current scenario that we're talking about now, would be offset by, as we pay these loans off, that's going to generate more money. Over and above the entitlement, you won't have to pay in 2015 roughly $184,000.
So the savings from that?
Yeah, more than makes up for what this, you know, what this loan would cost. In addition, two years after that, we pay off another loan, and it'd free up another $85,000. So over the next, you know, five fiscal years, we'll essentially be down to the loan for the senior center and this loan.
I understand that better. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woschowski.
Thank you, Counselor Altrino. Counselor Crowe? Counselor Nester?
Thank you, thank you, for yielding counsel. So again, we'll go back to the $25,000 a year that were locked in for about 18, 20 years?
Right.
Coming out of the CBDG money?
Yep.
Okay.
But again, all of the details haven't been worked out. The offer that the Bread of Life people have made is that they would forego the, well, they would take the $10,000 but pay it back to the city in another way, which leaves a net of roughly $25,000.
Yeah. I think they do great things. There's no question about it. But if I'm looking at $25,000 and the budget's continually being cut, and whatever that proportion is of the budget that's being cut that we have to allocate to one nonprofit, it's going to devastate other nonprofits throughout the city, absolutely devastate them. So again, as long as we have an opportunity to come back and, and have a final say on what happens, maybe the finances will change, but I just, I just see it's having a devastating effect on other nonprofits.
And I think that's what we're hearing. They will come back. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woschowski. Obviously, I know, everyone knows how much good work both organizations do. And I had the same, I had a conversation with the, with the mayor of the same concerns. If, you know, we hear every year, community development block grant is being wiped out totally, and then the city's on the hook for still having to pay back the loan. So we'd have to put some stipulations in that they would still be responsible. So we'd have to put some stipulations in that they would still be responsible for the funding, for the funds.
Yep.
And actually, on the plan, the 19 studio, is that, from what I remember, there was going to be eight or nine, and now it seems to be more than doubled from the original plan? Is that?
Though, I'm sorry, I missed that.
The 19, the 19 units?
Yeah.
That had gone, was that always in the original plan?
No. No, I think the original plan had 11.
11. That's what I thought. And now, is this
But with more units comes potentially more money, and maybe, I don't want to give away our negotiating position with everybody in the room here and on television, but, I mean, there may be a way to actually secure some more money. We have, that's why we want to get a good look at the operating pro forma. But, again, the Bread of Life people, I think, have been very forthright and, I think, very earnest in attempting to show the council and the city that they want to help pay this loan back as much as they can.
So, the, and now, has this plan gone to the planning board or site plan review?
Yes, that's
The new, the new plan?
The new plan is before, is going to be heard before the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so now, if the loan is going to the Bread of, who will ultimately own the building? If they're both paying equal proportions?
Again, it's yet to be worked out. The, the structure of who will own what isn't quite determined yet. And I don't know if anyone from TRICAP has yet, I might want to answer that, but as, as we get to the point where this is going to be approved, and we begin to develop, you know, what the conditions of the loan are, we'll, and before we come back to the council, we'll have all that information for you. It'll certainly have to be some form of ownership of a piece of property that the city can place a lien on for the $500,000. So, again, how, what that form is, I really don't know. I don't think they could probably tell you at this point. It depends on what's approved by the planning board and what, what gets built. But we'll be watching it, and again, as the mayor said, we'll come back to the council before we finalize this.
And it goes back to, so HUD is looking at the 19, with the 19 as, you know, where you're going to raise funds? And if they were, the loan is going to the Bread of Life, then really, the revenues generated would be going to TRICAP, so they'll be paying off. You see, what, you mean, they have to, there's, they're two separate entities?
But, but the Bread of Life generates revenue as well. They have a capital campaign that, the budget, the target number in the budget I saw was a million, a little over a million dollars. They have cash that they're going to put in, and they have, they're talking about a bank loan.
And they've collected the million dollars that went through the capital campaign?
Not yet. No, they have a capital campaign underway. I spoke to one entity I know that they applied to, who told me that they had met and they want to provide a substantial donation to them. They just want these kind of details worked out first. They want to, before they commit foundation money, they want to know that this project's going forward. And certainly, by the time we get HUD's review and approval, and we come back to the council, a lot of these answers, I think, will be a lot clearer. How they've done in their capital campaign, what banks are willing to participate in the funding and for how much, and at what interest rate, what TRICAP will be able to do in terms of financing their side of the equation with, because they have multiple sources of state housing finance subsidy programs that they need to get approval from. So, there's still a long ways to go. And again, not to reiterate this, but what the mayor has indicated is we're asking for permission to apply.
Permission to apply, and then, wait, the loan comes back, you get approved, and for some reason, we just don't like the conditions or this, that they're not suitable to, you know?
The mayor won't sign the documents. If he doesn't sign the documents, the money doesn't
And who, and who has the final authority to sign the documents after?
The mayor.
All right. So
As authorized by you people.
I guess he just gave me, oh, I'm sorry. The heave-ho. All right. So it's after we say, if we say today, yeah, go, you know, apply, then?
You may not hear from us for six months while this thing is being reviewed. It could, HUD could respond and ask questions that can't be answered satisfactorily, and they might say, no, we're not going to approve it. Then it's a moot point, and you don't need to worry about anything. They may ask for information, be provided it, send it on to Washington by the end of the year, or probably by October, and it may take another four or five months of review in Washington in terms of getting that to a point where they would approve it.
So, but my question was really, so after we say, yeah, sure, go apply, then we have no more controls or decisions to be made?
No, you have all the control and all the decision. The mayor said he would come back to the council before he, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but before he signed anything to get your approval.
Okay.
So you have another bite of the apple.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Crowe. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that the services that these two organizations provide, that is the Bread of Life and TRI, City Community Action Program, are services that continue to be needed, that they grow. We have an obligation as the leaders of the city to help to, help to serve this population of persons. And it makes me feel just so proud of us as a City of Malden to be willing to step out and do things like this, to take advantage of loans that come down the pike. It would be so easy for us to, to pull back and say, these are tough economic times, and let's not be taking these chances. But I, but I hope the rest of you are as proud as I am of what we do as a city, of stepping out and helping these organizations. And to you, Mr. Woschowski, and the Redevelopment Authority, for, for your leadership and your guidance in all of this, I say thank you to that, to the mayor, to the, to the organizations themselves, to Bread of Life, for what they are doing in our city, for TRI, City Community Action Program, for what they are doing for our city. I think it is great. We owe them our, our respect and our support, and I'm looking forward to, to moving favorably on this paper that's before us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Council Spatafora for the first time.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to commend, I think everybody said the accolades of the organization, and I think it's, it's probably a great feeling for the organization to probably have at least the ability of the bite of the apple to actually have a home. You know, from, I really feel from an organizational standpoint about, you know, preparing all that food and moving it with a little, I have a little of that in my background. I think it's going to be, you know, rest assured, when you get a kitchen like that, it'd be a lot easier on everybody, not including the people you're serving, but the people who are helping serve. So I commend you in that. You know, the second thing is, I also, I hope everybody in the crowd on TV understands why the council, from at least my standpoint, probably every up here, there are so many organizational groups in the City of Malden that help so many people, and it's tough for us to kind of put all this in perspective because I think what happens is, like Councilor Anderson said, and, you know, we've talked about it before, this is some creative financing, both from the federal government standpoint, from the City of Malden, and in the combination of two organizations. So, I commend you for being one of the first organizations to come here and ask to do this to a Section 108 loan. Now, the issue that presents the council up here is, there are so many organizations that are looking for homes, to build their own, you know, from the North Shore Black Women's Association, I know they're looking to find a home. Where do we, as a council, say yes, no, yes, no? And I think that's always been the concern, at least from this councilor, and every other council up here that talk in the background. It's not that we're concerned about necessarily, yeah, we want you to pay back the loans, obviously, we want you to find a home, but come two years from now, when another organization comes to us and asks us for this type of endeavor or investment, we might not be able to do that. And at one point, when do we say no, even if we could do that? Especially being in the position of the government. So, I'm very supportive of this. I think you might be the first, you might be the last organization who could actually do something like this until it's repaid because I think the city's got to be very careful how we tread. But that being said also, you know, I was sharing some of my concerns, looking at the plan of 19 units. And first, let me give you a little history about this building. When the mayor was the councilor, we, there was a potential buyer for this property. It was, it was a religious organization, and we met the pastor, and the councilor's concern, when Councilor Christensen was the councilor, was the same concern I have as a councilor at large, is they wanted to put in there, I believe, a school, the pastor wanted to live in there, and they want to have a very active church. I think everybody down there knows that that's a very, very active street. If this was a condo development, and a new, either whether it be in a new building or an old building, I would be completely honest with you, I wouldn't support it as a councilor at large. I know it's not a condo development, I know it's for a different need, and I know they're not going to have three bathrooms, and, you know, they're going to, I understand that. But the only thing I'm a little bit hesitant on is that the number of units, from my perspective as a councilor at large, is a little high. And I, that's why I shared with Councilor Crowe, it's her ward, I would, and I asked her, you know, make sure we go to the planning board. If this was a private development, I would sit up here right now and say to everybody in this room, I would not support it. I know it's a different use, but we're in a very saturated part of town, there is tremendous traffic, I know there'll be no cars there. So all I want, everybody, to do the caution, and I know this is a beginning, I am supporting this, I would just be very careful of the number of units we put there. We do have a lot of traffic there now, whether it be pedestrian, whether it be, you know, vehicular, excuse me. There's a active church right around the corner there, there's an active Dunkin' Donuts there, and those are the concerns that I had four years ago when this was presented, of putting a religious building there. I am for this building, I support the loan, I just want everybody to take into consideration the 19 units as a councilor for the neighborhood is a little high, I'd like to see it come down a little bit lower. And I just want to make sure, to the council's point too, is we're putting out these pro-formas, if the federal government says, well, we're looking at a pro forma, it's 22 units, and you come back to us, do we have to get locked into those 22 units? The second question is on, on the subordination of the loan. Does HUD go before us when we subordinate the loan?
Well
If it was to be approved?
Yeah. No, this loan, the $500,000 loan would be placed in the property, and it would be subordinate to any bank financing.
And then HUD? Because HUD, because you mentioned HUD would want
They would take a subordinate position. They would take
And then would take one too?
Well, you don't need to. You're gonna, the mortgage, the $500,000 mortgage is basically going to be from the city
Okay.
Through HUD.
Okay.
I'm just saying that that mortgage will be subordinate to whoever provides
The financing.
The first level financing.
Okay.
Which I think in the pro forma was $475,000.
Okay. So, again, I want to rest assured that I, I think every council up here is, we're in the right mindset, we're happy we can start this process. We hopefully find you a permanent home, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to look at this again. But I just think, you know, the reason why there was a lot of discussion here, A, it's a lot of money, B, it's, it's a new endeavor for the council, it's, it's exciting, but the same token is, you know, there's only so much funding out there. And just from my perspective, you know, the 19 units kind of popped out at me. I think it's a little high, that's my own personal opinion. If you, if you did 11, I'd probably be a little happier. But I'm in full support of this. I understand you need to make money, but on the same token, I think we are asking the neighborhood to take on a, a big endeavor, and I think we just just take them into consideration, and that's all. So again, good luck. I support the, the process, and I look forward to seeing everybody here in a couple of months. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilspatafora. Councilor Kinnon?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Very quickly, to Councilor Crowe's stand, I thought it was less units as well. It is exploratory, so it's going to have to come back. I would assure you, and I would certainly tell everybody in the audience and on TV, that for me personally, if you were to come back and say, I don't want this in my ward, particularly on the housing side, I would support you 100% because I probably wouldn't want the 19 units in my ward. And I would expect the same type of support. So, again, whatever you decide on that piece of it, I would certainly be in support later on, but it doesn't hurt to explore. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kinnon. And now for Council Matheson.
Well, I think most of the information has been fleshed out. I want to thank everyone for coming here and being patient with the length of the meeting. We had a lot of important business that preceded this. I think a lot of the questions that were raised as we went around the counter have been, have been answered as we went along. Thanks, Mayor, for stealing my thunder. You did a great job. And Steve, thank you so much for all the information you had. I know Councilor Kinnon had a question about the housing aspect of it. We do have Philip here, but as we know, it's 19 units. There is preference to veterans and Malden residents to the extent allowable. I know Councilor Darkangelo mentioned something about turning some urban blight into a new structure, which really is a wonderful aspect of this project. It's going to be in the bike-to-sea path, and it has the endorsement of the bike-to-sea people. It's going to open up that area back there, and it's going to close down a blind driveway that's dangerous pedestrians. It's going to offer a nice patio and beautification of that area as well. But the timing of the project is critical, so we do need to vote. Your vote is only to grant authority to the mayor and the MRA to apply for this process, and they are doing their diligence. The organizations have gone back to the MRA several times with their pro forma, greater information. They're not treading carelessly. The MRA is doing its diligence every step of the way. And as the mayor indicated, there is a, there's going to be a lien, there's going to be a lot of oversight to this, and they are coming back to us. So, unless there's any other questions, you know, I thank everyone for all their thoughtfulness and all the good questions that came, came up.
Thank you, Council Matheson. And I, from the chair, certainly sitting and having the procedural opportunity to speak last, everything has been said and commented about the good work and the most important aspect of the organization's mission, vision. I think we're hearing that in terms of this particular project. Do you want to take a moment to also thank my colleague? John Matheson has been working diligently to get us up to speed and give us the information we need. Because I, who do not sit on any particular committee, was not aware of the detail of information related to this subject matter when it had been discussed, and it actually has changed a course of discussion. So from, from the, from the seat of knowing how important and valuable this is, is an asset to the community, and something that we do want to nurture, and to the comments related to making sure that we can appropriately fund it and afford the necessary mechanism that will be in place, and at the same time, support a great need. And it also states, I think, a clear value of who we are as a community. I too will support this tonight, as far as it being, obviously, an exploratory. So, that being said, I think we're ready to take a vote. I don't see any more lights on this topic.
Motion to adopt?
So, the motion on Council Lucy's motion to adopt is a roll call.
Council Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Crowe?
Yes.
Yes. Darkangelo?
Yes.
Yes. Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Yes. Matheson?
Present.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pres, um, yes. Nestor?
Yes.
Yes. Spatafora?
Yes.
Yes. Altrino? Yes. Bucci?
Yes. 11 to 0. It is adopted. Thank you.
The standing committee on Finance, whom was referred, Paper Number 281, Series of 2012, having considered this, make the following report. Order that a revolving fund be established in accordance with the provisions of Section 3.36.3 of the revised ordinance of 1991. In the amount of $15,000, committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Councilor Lucy for the committee.
On Council Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Lucy for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. We took this up in finance last week. We passed an ordinance with the city dealing with public, nuisance public properties, and it was decided that there was a $15,000 revolving fund that needed to get that program up
fund that needed to get that program up and running. It's going to be raised by the fees charged from that new department, Public Properties Department, I keep on forgetting the full, PPP, I guess. So, this is just to get that program that's already been voted on through ordinance up and running.
Okay. Any questions? I see no lights. On Council Lucy's motion to adopt is a roll call.
Council Anderson?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Darkangelo?
Yes.
Yes. Kennon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Yes. Matheson?
Yes.
Yes. Murphy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Yes. Spatafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes. Adopted, eleven to nothing. Next order of business?
The Standing Committee on Public Property, whom was referred, Paper Number 370, Series of 2011, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the city sell at public auction certain parcels of tax titled land. On Glen Del Ave, committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Councilor Nester for the committee.
Council Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Nester.
This was unanimously voted out of committee tonight, I hope we can move forward, I don't know if the sponsor would like to speak on it, but it's more of a beautification project than revamping the area as well. So, I think it came out three to nothing? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. As the sponsor, I will speak to it, just so folks know what it is, it's a couple pieces of tax titled properties the city owns that we're looking at turning over and renovating it, putting it out for a public auction for the wholefulness of possibly even residential building to bring in revenue in terms of taxes. So, that being said, on Council, I see no questions, on Councilor Nester's motion to adopt, roll call.
Council Anderson? Yes. Crowe?
Yes.
Darkangelo?
Yes.
Kennon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Yes. Matheson?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Yes. Spatafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Yes. Bucci?
Yes.
Yes.
Is adopted, eleven to zero. Next order of business?
Under suspension of docket rules resolved, is the sense of City Council that the Traffic Commission assess resident proposals to enhance traffic safety on Belmont Street. Councilor Crowe?
On Council Crowe's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Crowe for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually just want to refer this to traffic, it's been an issue, an ongoing issue on the Everett Line, and there's been a couple of proposals that either were shot down, not heard, from the Traffic Commission, so I want to meet with the residents and bring some of those back.
On Council Crowe's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
On Council Anderson's motion to discharge Paper Number 254B from License Committee, application for transfer of the Class II dealer's license from SNL Auto Sales to Champion Auto Sales at 251 Broadway.
On Council Anderson's motion to discharge paper, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Anderson.
President, thank you very much. This is a paper that went to the License Committee the last time we met, which is, I think, a couple of weeks ago. The council president, who's also the ward council of the area, and I met with the new proprietors down on Broadway. We were satisfied with their explanation of doing some configuration changes down there in support of their license for transfer. We want to assure that the plot plan for the number of cars be reduced to fifteen in accordance with the compliance officer's review, and therefore I would ask granting on this license.
On Council Anderson's motion to grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And to list the two conditions that, as Council Anderson stated, but for the record, that the number of vehicles be reduced to fifteen, and that a plot plan be approved by compliance, be filed with the City Clerk's Office.
Docent is clear?
Docent is clear. Personal privilege, start to my left.
Losing track, my last time. I can talk for an hour. So, I'd like to invite everybody from Ward Six down to Trapton Park on July, Wednesday, July 4th, for our annual Independence Day celebration. We will begin the day at 9:00 a.m., going through 1:00. And, you know, for those who can't come, I wish you a great Fourth of July week, and for everybody, a great summer. I would also request that the mayor put this management letter online, so the residents can see it, and that we can be transparent, and let everybody understand what we're talking about here tonight. So, thank you very much, have a great summer, everyone.
Thank you, Council Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to invite everyone down to Ward Five for our Fourth of July celebration, which will be held at Forest Hill Park on Wednesday the 4th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. We do have a growing doll carriage bicycle parade, anything that has wheels is acceptable if it's decorated, so start to get your creative thoughts going. We also do a bake-off, it's our 30-year-old bake-off, so if we have any fledgling cooks out there that want to enter our bake-off, please come down from Ward Five or other wards, we will accept entries from anywhere. Once again, I hope everyone has a great Fourth of July, and wish you all a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Anderson?
What a wonderful tradition we have here in the city of Malden, as we put on a great deal of effort throughout the city, throughout each of the eight wards of putting on these Fourth of July celebrations. I know that not all the cities around do that, and that's another, I think, great testament to the forward thinking of the city of Malden, of doing this citywide in each of the eight wards, and like my other ward councilor colleagues, I extend an invitation to the residents of Ward Seven to come to Lincoln Common on Wednesday, July 4th, for fun and entertainment, and expressions of our faith in our nation and independence of our nation. Wednesday, July 4th, at Lincoln Common, the program is online, invite everyone to come, enjoy themselves. And to my colleagues, it's my expression of good summer to you all, as well as all residents of the city of Malden. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Council Darkangelo?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give kudos to the administration for the manner with which the recent storm was handled. I got several calls from constituents and myself, I was affected with power out, but I think they did a good job of communicating online and letting people know what was going on in various parts of the city. So I think that's a good thing, and it shows really communication, and I'm big on communication. So, I'd like to congratulate them on that, wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and stay safe. Also, a personal plug tomorrow night, I'm very pleased to be going in as the president of the Malden Rotary Club, you're all certainly invited, it's at Bobby C's tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. I know we've got a couple of Kiwanis here, I'm sure you wouldn't be joining us, but you're welcome to join us if you'd like. So, that will be a great thing we're going to do for the next year, I'm very pleased, I think the mayor's going to be in attendance, and I'm going to be very pleased to be sworn in by our own city clerk, Karen Anderson. So, very proud to be doing that for the city, and I know we have, I have at least one fellow or vegetarian here, so looking forward to that tomorrow night. And just, this was the first budget that I had gone through, so I just want to say thanks to everybody, I mean, showed up to all the meetings, they were long meetings, a lot of them, it was a very involved process, and just, again, I learned a lot there, and there's a lot more to be learned, so I appreciate all the effort that's gone in. We didn't have the votes this time, maybe we'll get them next time, hopefully we influence the debate in some way to be able to impact future spending. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Darkangelo. Council Altrino?
Thank you, Madam President. Hopefully the camera's still on, unlike two weeks ago. July 4th, Ward Two at Dever Park, starting at 9:00. The highlight will be at 9:30 with retired Councilor Paul Condon leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked him after 26 years to be honored to have him come down, I think he was looking forward to his First July Fourth off, but that's not going to happen. We have a website, www.wardtwomalden.com, that's the ward's new website, and you can find the entire program there. And congratulations to Council Darkangelo, and Kiwanis will probably still be chewing the trivia question, so thank you, and thank you, Madam President, happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Thank you, Council Altrino. Council Lucy?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a park, so I don't have anyone to invite you down to, but I urge everyone to take advantage of the parks, because this is one of the few cities that do that, and I like to hear down in Ward Two that they are going to recognize the big guy, Paul Condon. As we all will find out when we're out of here, once you're out, you're out, it's good to see that a guy that spent 26 years up here, that he finally, that he continues to get the recognition that he deserves. So, I will most certainly be at Dever Park on my first stop at Fourth of July to honor the big guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lucy. To my right, Council Matheson?
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations, Councilor Darkangelo, being the new Malden Rotaryian President. Many Fourth of Julies going on around the city, learned firsthand that this is quite a task. The Ward Three Fourth of July, as tradition has it, is going to be in Emmerich Park, we're going to include Felsmeier Pond for a road race, we're going to have lots of fun things down there, pony rides, and water slides, and bouncy houses, and all kinds of fun stuff. Good luck with all the ward councils, I know the work and the organization that goes into it. Also want to alert the residents of Malden that if you're around in July, as I am, there's going to be Shakespeare in the Park every Saturday at 5:30 at four different parks around the city. So if you want a free community theater, I think that's a great place to bring the family, or spend a night out in the park in Malden. That's all I have. If anyone's still watching, thank you for sticking through such a long council meeting, I think it was an important one, to say the least. I know some of the counselors were tough but fair, and I think that's the type of debate we need to have, makes us all a little bit stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Matheson. Council Nester?
Thank you. The Ward Four Fourth of July celebration will be this Saturday, the 30th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at Quatermallee Park, rides, pony rides, games, and the ever-popular hot dog eating contest, right at 12:00. So, it gets bigger every year. Thanks, everybody, and come on down, enjoy it.
Council Crowe?
Thank you, and I'll continue on with that, that the Ward One Fourth of July celebration will be held on Wednesday, July 4th, at Green Street Park, 9:00 to 1:00. I have two former councilor, Ward One City Councilors in the chamber right now, maybe they want to volunteer to do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Or anything else, maybe sing. We have, like everybody else, rides, races, you know, cookout, we have great raffles, mountain bikes, a Kindle, couple of other things, so, and we also will be continuing our tradition of having the outdoor movie night on the 3rd, the night before the Fourth of July, so anybody's welcome to come to that, I hope everybody does. Down at Green Street Park, we have a fantastic, big movie screen out there, we have the popcorn machine going, smells great, I invite everybody out. You can't tell the movie, it's against the law. It's a family-friendly movie, and I'll start at sundown, so I hope everybody comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Crowe. Council Spatafora?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I didn't mean to interrupt the council, but the clerk asked me what the answer to the movie was, I think it's a highlight of the Christensen administration, I'm sure there'll be plenty of photos and videos be played, so I wanted to make sure that he got his piece in there. Happy Independence Day, everybody. As a councilor at large, I get to enjoy all the parks as well, and I think Council Lucy said, I think if you don't go down there as a resident, at least stop by your local park, or at least go around the city. You know, the councils raise a lot of money, they spend a lot of time doing this, I'm glad I don't have to do it, but it is a lot of work, and I think you should take the time to at least go down there and see some of the organizational and the team spirit and the community that we do put on. I want to just correct Council Lucy, you can't, you know, when you're done, you're done. Council Anderson has a park named after him, he left and he came back, so he's back, so I wanted to correct there, and also, I just wanted to thank not only the councils, but the people in the audience for their indulgence for allowing me to have my son participate in these meetings. I know he's been running around, if you've seen him on TV, but more importantly, he's learning the lesson that, you know, his parents are not the only one who debate over politics, and they can still be friends at the end of the day, and I think this meeting shows a prime example of what it is to be an American, and showed the good spirit of debate, so I applaud you for that, and I appreciate everybody's patience for having, he loves coming here, and I thank the councils, and thank you.
Thank you, Council Spatafora. And I, from my chair, first, would like to thank the folks who've worked very long days, long hours, in getting us to this busy night. Eleanor from Human Resources, and Chuck from, Mr. Rannigan from, as our controller, obviously been led here by the budget that was forwarded to us from the administration. But I do want to take a minute to thank Greg Lucy, the whole finance team, I mean, we've spent a lot of hours, Byron Murphy, when I look down, it's Peg Crowe, it's Craig Spatafora, John Matheson, I think everyone, David Darkangelo, Steve Altrino, no, there isn't anyone in this hall that hasn't had some hand in the process, but no one worked any harder than the core group of people who are constantly on call, worked all weekends, getting materials ready, in some manner or form, one could debate respectfully, timely or not timely, but the work was done. I want to thank the person to my right, who just sits next to us all the time, and some people understand the busyness that she has, but she stops dead in her track, and I'm talking about Karen, I do want to take a moment to thank you, Karen, because there's been a lot of work going on in crafting this budget, and getting us to here amongst the other activities that we've all been working on in other projects and important initiatives of the city, so I do personally want to thank each and every one of you. Want to also say, July 4th, Wednesday, at Linden Park, it will be kicking off at 8:45 with Caitlin Knox singing the Star Spangled Banner, and her mom with her to lead the charge of the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a host of different fun activities, as you folks have described. Do want to congratulate my colleague, Dave Darkangelo, congratulations on your next endeavor as president. And I know I'm not really, I think the cameras are not running, but in the event that the word is out there, we are having a very important meeting with the public tomorrow related to a Dunkin' Donut proposal done in Linden Square at the Old Bank property at the intersection. So, for folks who may be here, from the media, wherever else, that meeting's going to be very important in engaging conversation with the proposed developer, and that will be at 6:00 o'clock at the Linden School in their cafeteria. And that being said...
I'd like to make a motion...
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to recess, subject to the call of the chair.
And on that motion, the background to that will be to reconvene on Thursday, the 28th, at 7:00 p.m., for the purpose of continuing our deliberations on the ordinance changes that we began on the 26th, and such other businesses may lawfully come before the council. Stephen Altrino's motion to pass? All in favor? Opposed?